Good evening. I'd like to call to order the City Council's special meeting of Monday, March 24, 2025. Please call the roll.
Of course. Councilmember Stone.
Here.
Councilmember Burt.
Here.
Vice Mayor Vinker.
Here.
Councilmember Lithgow Haines.
Here.
Councilmember Lou.
Here.
Councilmember Rechtal.
Here.
Mayor Lalling, for the record, all present.
All right, thank you. So we have a long special orders of the day today, which is to interview candidates for the Boards and Commissions Spring Recruitment Architectural Review Board, Human Relations Commission, Utilities Advisory Commission. So that will take us until about, well, after eight o'clock. And for those of you that are looking for public comment, that will begin right after eight o'clock, eight ten, eight fifteen, in that, in that range. And presume some of them are here and some of them will be online. All right, and we already have our interview schedule in the packet. So.
Perfect. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Our first recruitment would be for the Architectural Review Board, and in person today, we have David Hirsch.
And then just to recap for the council on the publics, as well as their candidates' awareness, we will be doing each of the interviews batched by the Board or Commission. So we'll be, we'll be interviewing candidates for the Architectural Review Board first, and there are three candidates. And then to follow that, we will be interviewing for the Human Relations Commission, and then to follow that, Utilities Advisory Commission. Interviews are 10 minutes. And our first candidate is David Hirsch, which he provided some supplemental material that we're passing out to the council.
You're on.
How do you do?
I think you know the drill. If you want to just kind of give an intro as long as you like, and then we'll ask you some questions in a bit of time, then we'll follow up at the end.
I have just a two and a half minute.
Great. It's great.
Okay. You have illustrations in front of you there of two projects that I'll be talking about. Can you hear me clearly, I hope? Yeah, thanks.
Yes.
The concept for the building 824, which is the first one on, in front of you, San Antonio Road is an incredibly unique idea. It's come before the board, and we passed it. Community of 28 senior residences, a mix of different sized units, along with the owners dwelling and lots of shared activity spaces. First for a coffee bar open to the public. Our board has several suggested design improvements, most importantly, to simplify the San Antonio facade, which you can see the comparison there. By reducing the three elements to really two, it's a narrow site, and so we felt it was important to make a significant impression by doing that. The Public Art Commission suggested that they would put a piece of sculpture, a piece of facade work, on top of the grid work that you see in front of you, and we voted that down. We didn't really feel it was necessary to have some element added to something that was already quite a substantial, nice design in the facade of this building. Well, this example represents the ARB's high point. Our approval without my no vote on the townhomes for Encina represents the opposite, a blind eye to the location of these 10 dwellings in the middle of a huge parking lot with no proper open space. To approve this minimal 10-unit project on such a small portion of this extremely well-situated, potentially dense housing site will create significant lost opportunity. So a chance to design a coordinated community environment that respects its location next to one of Palo Alto's iconic commercial centers. I felt we should have paused any decision at the first application and asked the planning department, or preferably an outside consultant, to study the entire site comprehensively. Perhaps we will avoid this lost opportunity, since town and country retail owners are finally committed to the entire site and are talking to the developer and architects of the townhomes. To reinforce my point of view on this, PTC's proper perspective, a tied vote based on similar concerns stalled the approval. I hope you will also resist the flawed townhouse project. I also hope to remain on the ARB with the intention of keeping this focus on more comprehensive planning of the next housing element projects. Thank you.
Thank you. So now councilmembers can weigh in with their own questions.
Sure enough.
They're not quick enough, so I'm going to ask the first one. I was actually going to ask you about what you just brought up there, because in your written application, you talked about that, and sort of the problems of a development comes up, the landlord doesn't own all the space. Do you have sort of guidelines as to what you think would make that happen more seamlessly than to have to go through all these battles to get proper use or better use in your, in your thought about how we could get more of a unified design?
I think it's a good idea if you get us into the picture very early on, when you first, when projects come to the council and you approve them for moving on. I think if we have an opportunity to comment on them, most of the housing projects now, you know, are going to come with limited possibility for us to speak on them. So I think if it's kind of first preliminary schematic, we could add something to, to your expertise on the, on that, on the projects that come into you by having some opinions early on in project, very early on in the schematic stage.
Okay. Councilmember Rechtal?
Yeah, some of the, some of the applicants have complained about the long process in our city, both, you know, going through ARB and PTC. What do you think of the flow, and is there any way that we could improve?
Well, yeah, I think it's, it is a problem, but you know, again, we get a project when planning says it's ready for us. We don't, we don't make that decision, you know? And if they come to us, you know, I think a good example would be the 660 project, by the way, 660 University, where we really had several different projects presented to us. So we didn't extend the time on that. It's things that they brought in that are new. So for the latest project, you know, it's quite different than the one in the beginning, the commercial space on the top of the building. I want to say that they came in also with the project was a problem in the beginning, because it had access to the parking was off of Middlefield. I lived a couple of blocks away. That's not going to work, you know? Middlefield is busy now and going to be busier later on, you know, as traffic increases. If, God forbid, they build that building and Menlo, you know, next to us. But in any case, you know, I don't think we're the cause, to put it that way. And I think it's a shame that we're going to be reduced in the number of times we can look at, especially housing projects that are so significant and going to be much bigger as they come in. So, you know, sometimes we're lucky and get a project that's really well-designed, and we only can have to fiddle with a little bit. But a lot of times, I think it's a, it's a problem of, A, the project comes in with something that hasn't been completely thought through, either by the architect or by planning in the process of it, or that, you know, we find opinions that are significantly different than both of those people, both of those reviews.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry.
We're in a very interesting area, so let me do another follow-up. And that is, what you just suggested, would that be a, just an opinion session? Not that you're making judgments or recommendations back to the developer?
The idea of the early, yes, it could certainly be.
Would it be like questions that the Supreme Court puts before they hear?
Definitely, you know, this is, please consider these issues and alternatives, you know? Maybe we would say there should be some alternatives here. It shouldn't be so fixed.
So against my Rechtal's point, it wouldn't be another hearing per se?
No, no, that's right. It could be exactly that way. Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Councilmember Burt?
Well, David, thanks for your many years and creative approaches that you've taken. And I know that you have been a housing advocate for a long while, and really an advocate for densification in appropriate locations.
Right.
You interview, you review individual projects as the ARB, but we're, we're struggling with areas where we're going to have big transformations of San Antonio, of El Camino, and then of our downtowns with additional housing. What role do you think the ARB should have in the area plan approach as opposed to the review of individual projects?
Again, a great question, of course. Throw it back at you, because you're the one who's been doing this much longer than I have now. So yeah, I think, you know, I sort of see certain areas where we ought to be working on them now, even though nothing has come in yet. I disagree a little bit with Ed, because he says that we don't build buildings. That's true, you don't build them, but that doesn't mean you can't get in early on the design, concept design of, of, of projects. You know, of course, the Encina, the town, town and country issue, that's one. If we had been in early, maybe, you know, we were given a project to look at on the, on that, on Encina. And so we said, okay, we reviewed this project and we talked about that, but that's not enough. I was really angry with the, with our board, because clearly we should have said we need to see the whole of this site. But there are really a series of latte on Hamilton, you know, which we, we brought in and showed your, the council a scheme for it, Peter, who will miss greatly, you know, and I presented to the council, to some of you here. And I think that was a kind of a critical one. We tried to answer the parking issue and we, you know, so.
Okay.
I think that
Thank you.
we could be very useful in the beginning, you know?
Thank you.
I know I'm probably speaking too much here.
A little bit, little bit long. Thank you.
Yeah.
Next up, Mayor?
That was it. Thank you, David. Yep. Moving to our moving to our next candidate for the Architectural Review Board, Semma Yavuz.
Rather unprepared, I guess. But so I'm an architect and urban planner by training, and I've been, since 2012, I've been working more as an investor, real estate investor, and I've been working, focusing on affordable housing, out-of-state investment projects. And I've been doing multifamily and mobile home park or other affordable housing projects. And affordable housing project has been actually a problem over the years, and more so in the last decade. I'm a resident of Palo Alto. We moved to Palo Alto 2018, and I moved out to 2022, and I came back again. So I'm not a low-income, you know, farmer. I make pretty good money, but even I'm, you know, have good income, I cannot afford to live in Palo Alto when it comes to housing. And so my kids have good education. They're out of college. They make good money. They can't, young as young people, they can't afford to live here. But here in Palo Alto, where innovation happens, I mean, that's where we are drawn here. We need to be able to bring in, draw young people who will continue the the legacy of Palo Alto, right? The innovators and shakers. So I think the reason I was interested in this position was to kind of bring more of an outsider perspective, you know, not only as an architect, urban planner. I worked as an architect, urban planner, for about 15 years or so, worked on school projects, campus projects. I was one of the first lead certified architects in the United States, one of the 50, and then I educated other architects. I haven't been working as an architect exclusively since 2012. I've been doing more investment projects. So I've been using my urban planning and architectural education or background more in the portfolios that I've been managing. So yeah, that's about me, my background. So I'm more of an outsider, not necessarily 100% involved, but I mean, I tried to do some projects here, was looking at a couple of projects that I can do myself by a home, you know, fix it up and so forth. We're always outfitted. Even if, you know, we can afford to buy homes here, but it's just like the price is extremely high.
Okay. We'll do councilmember questions. Councilmember Burt?
Thank you. So bemoaning the cost of housing is one thing.
Yeah.
Coming up with solutions is another. So I, and if you could be as succinct as possible in your answers, because we just don't have much time, but two, two related questions. One is, at a higher level, what would you do to address the cost of housing here? And then second, within specifically deed-restricted affordable housing, we see that is now costing even more than market rate housing for units, over 700,000, sometimes a million dollars a unit for very modest affordable housing. One of the architectural approaches and construction approaches has been to move toward really modular and prefabricated housing. And the question I would have of you as an architect is, to what extent have you become familiar with those emerging methods and available suppliers and the ability to have good architecture with prefabricated or modular construction to drive down the cost?
Yeah. I mean, manufactured housing has been my focus in the last, you know, five, 10 years, actually. Obviously, the cost here in California is very different than Midwest. My focus has been Midwest, but still, by far, what you can do with modular housing is very different than the stick construction. So it's, so therefore, it is way more affordable. So to give you an answer, for example, if you look in Midwest, on average, I was looking at a portfolio that I might possibly purchase. House costs, mini house costs 250, but we can provide a house at 70, 80K, brand-new home.
And the, my related part of that question was, how do we embrace manufactured housing or modular construction and have sound architecture that will fit in with our community?
I think you would need to have good architecture. What happens with the modular, there's stigma, so you have to remove the stigma, and that stigma comes with the good urban design tools that you would be employing. I think regardless in this part of the country or in Palo Alto, the stigma could be very well, very quickly removed if you can afford something at an affordable rate, right? If you can afford something under 500K. The land, I think land purchase would be the problem here. If the land purchase could be remedied easily, the modular homes are at an affordable rate from the factories.
There's four minutes left, and we have more questions. So if you want to hear from others.
Sure.
Okay. Councilmember Lithgow Haines?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Yavuz, for applying. With respect to your work elsewhere on mobile home parks, there are ideas floating around in our community about increasing the number of safe parking lots that we might be able to accommodate RV dwellers, vehicle dwellers, maybe even tiny homes. And we know that the distributed cost of getting sewage, water, electricity to those individual sites can be quite expensive. I'm wondering if you have some sort of best-in, best practices for the minimum number of slots you would want to have in such a number of slots you would want to have in such a community in order to make it most cost efficient? Taking into account all that individual sort of utility services that would need to be provided?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, the higher the numbers, the better, obviously, right? I mean, anywhere if you can build 100 or 200 because of the scale of economy, your cost will come down significantly. So is, was, was that the question in relation to that or were you asking specifically numbers?
Yeah, the bigger the better. Yet land is so scarce here, so we're not, we don't have a whole lot of acreage to play with. So I'm.
Yeah, I mean, when it comes to tiny homes or modular homes, I think what would, what would work here in this part of the state is to go up. So when you build modular, you have to go up because there's a scarcity of land, right? So when you go up, of course, you double the, you know, you're not necessarily doubling the cost of the infrastructure. Right? You're actually dividing it by half almost. So I think the, if we can find ways to go up vertically instead of spreading, I think that has, that is the dilemma. We have to increase the density.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Lou?
Thank you. I was curious about your urban design background. Can you talk about one very specific change you would make to Palo Alto? Whether it's zoning or it's design guidelines and yeah, why you would make that?
All right. Um, yeah, I was looking at the historic. I can't recall the name, but I was looking at one project that I could possibly do as an architect. And I did design guidelines myself and I found the design guidelines to be not flexible enough to promote development. In, in the sense that the language is very restrictive, right? I mean, you can have a, that was a historic district, right downtown by Whole Foods and everything. I think the, the fitting in the context should be not necessarily figurative, but it must, I mean, the language doesn't necessarily need to continue the same in terms of style, right? You could be a modern design, but still fit into the context as long as the scale works. So what I would look for is more of the, you know, generalized design guidelines to the scale of the buildings than the style. So that was one thing that I actually observed when I wrote the, read the design guidelines to be very restrictive. That will kind of not make the developers to go take, you know, go forward with the project because they will think that, oh, that's a lot of hassle that I need to work with.
Okay. We'll have about 10 seconds. So I'm not sure there's time for a summary here. If you want to say anything else quickly.
Well, I mean, I would be an outsider, obviously. I have experience, but I, I'm a resident in Palo Alto, so. But my perspective would be more to look at what we have in hand and then bring the perspective from outside from my.
Okay.
Expertise.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes the applicants for ARB.
We actually have one more.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry.
One last one. Our last candidate is Yingxi Chen.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Yingxi Chen. I'm a licensed architect. And before I started my own practice, I worked with different architectural firms, which allowed me to be involved into different types of projects. And during that experience, I understand the importance of the site analysis and study the site. And also in recent years, I'm focused on the custom home design where I can work directly with my clients and also communicate with them, understanding their expectations and concerns. I attend design review meetings and also address the neighbors' concerns. And this interaction between, with the clients and neighbors and also variants agencies allow me to look at the project in a different way and also in a broader perspectives. And also I'm a current ARB member. I, I feel I'm very fortunate to be in this position for the last three years and I truly enjoyed it. I feel personally, it also gave me an opportunity to learn quickly about our city and our history and which I can also share with my kids. So that's why I'm here tonight again. And I wish I can have the opportunity to continue serve our community for another three years. And I'm open to any questions. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for that reintroduction as an incumbent. Councilmembers? Councilmember Lithgow Hames?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Chen, for re-upping, wanting to re-up. You mentioned you're fond of the Junior Museum and Zoo. It's such a wonderful new renovation, very distinctive architecture. And yet it's tiny, it's its own unique project. I'm, I think of it when I think of what might be possible on San Antonio Road, where we're envisioning thousands of new housing units with a hope that it will feel like a coherent community, even a neighborhood with all the, that that entails. I wonder, and this is piggyback on, councilmember Burt asked a very similar question to a prior applicant. It was also on my mind. What role do you think the ARB should be playing in the area plan for San Antonio Road?
Well, yeah, I, I wish we could have more active role in the larger urban, urban planning in specific areas. One specific area that I'm interested in is San Antonio corridor. And actually, we have reviewed a few projects in that area. And I noticed that there are some common issues that always come up with the projects along that area is the onsite circulation. So because it's already a very congested corridor and we want to make sure that the new, the new project will not bring a burden to the current traffic. And the onsite circulation could help relieve the burden. And also because when we talk about onsite circulation, it's not about the upcoming going tenants' cars, but also include the trash collection and also like the car share drop off areas and also the delivery loading areas. So I think those are the things that we need to plan very careful. And also I think those functional spaces are very essential to those building operations. I think if we solve this problem, this problem smartly, the, we can be a very good shape.
I'm going to jump in on my question because it's related to what Councilmember Lithgow Hames said. In your application down here, I wanted to ask you about, where you talked about, given the housing situation, especially interested in finding a balance between supporting healthy and growing city and preserving, preserving its unique character. If you've got an hour or two, we could really discuss that. So it's a kind of a hard question to ask you on the spot. But I'm trying to figure out if that's a design statement because what you just answered to her was more of a circulation pattern. So is it also relative to design somehow keep historic buildings and, and have super modern ones and some in the middle? Or what's your, what's your perspective on the design aspect of what you have there?
Well, yeah. So I, I think each city have its own characters and.
Each what? I'm sorry?
Each city have their own unique characters. And I think to Palo Alto, it's, we're still like low to mid, medium density city. And I don't see we are expecting any skyscrapers in town. And, but I understand that the housing crisis we are facing, so there, the change is inevitable. But I can see we are making this change gradually. And the scale, it shouldn't be. It is still like just medium density. It should be more appropriate to our town.
I see. Okay. Vice Mayor Baker?
Thank you, and thank you for applying. My question was much like Councilmember Lithgow Hames as well, but let me put a slightly finer point on it. Because I did note where you said you would like to see the ARB take an active role in reviewing large scale urban planning for specific areas. So San Antonio, but others too, I take it. And I mentioned the housing crisis and addressing onsite circulation areas. I guess my question is that we do have a housing crisis and we're trying to be somewhat streamlined in getting things through our process. Much as I'm a fan of area plans and I like the holistic thinking that you're talking about, how do we balance that with mission creep when we also have a planning and transportation commission and other things? So how, how do you see, you know, looking holistically without duplication of effort?
Yeah, actually, we are also always talking about whether we should have more collaborations between different boards and commissions. And hopefully there could be chance there is a joint meeting between, say, PTC and ARB. Because there, there are some issues that is overlapping, like for the traffic issues. And yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other council member questions? Seeing none, you can summarize if you like of your candidacy.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much for your interview and for your time. And my husband and I were always talking about moving to Palo Alto is the best decision we've ever made. So we really enjoyed walking along the neighborhood and we had great time with our kids to be in the park or in the libraries. So I think the ARB position is the opportunity that I can give back to the community. And I hope you can consider my application and thank you so much.
Thank you very much and thanks for coming back and saying you want to do it again.
Thank you.
Great, thanks.
Next, we'll be calling for the candidates for the Human Relations Commission. And the first candidate is Shridhar Karna.
Do you guys need some break?
Stay real close to the mic.
Oh, thank you. Good evening, council members, mayor and vice mayor. My name is Shridhar Karna. And I'm very, very happy and excited to be here. I've had a chance to speak to some of you to understand what the priorities are. I've been, you know, influenced by some of the members who've, who've been helping in this community. We live, I'm a proud resident of Palo Alto. My kids go to Aloni. And, you know, the things that we enjoy the most on Sundays is going to the libraries, going to the park and enjoying all the benefits that we are getting from Palo Alto. And I consider this to be an honor. So I appreciate considering this opportunity, considering me for this role. One of the things that I relate very closely is in terms of the mission of Palo Alto's HRC's commission in terms of being fair and just to vulnerable communities. I'm one of the beneficiaries of some of these in my country where I came from. Now, this is a great opportunity for me to take all my, you know, learnings and the things that I've done here. I'm particularly drawn to HRC's sorry, the HRC's, the priorities based on the public health, the public safety. And I'm in those very specifically, I'm interested in helping the youth mental health. I understand deeply that housing is one of the top priorities and also learning about people who are going through transitional housing and some of those. So I would love the opportunity to, to serve. And, and, you know, my motivation for this role is purpose driven. And I really want to help the city of Palo Alto, which is world renowned for its innovation and community to, to sort of become a role model for some of the other neighboring cities that are still, you know, figuring some of these things out. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll come to council. Councilmember Stone?
Hey, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Shridhar, for, for applying. You, you mentioned your, your interest in youth mental health, which is the top priority and concern of, of mine and one I'd like to see the HRC get, get more engaged with. Do you have any particular thoughts how the commission could be working on youth mental health? And maybe any background experience that you have in that to be able to bring to the commission?
Absolutely. So 15 years ago, I, I moved from India here. While I was in India, I used to work very specifically for an orphanage for girls who went to high school. The high school in India is only three years. And so it was a group of, it was an orphanage for differently abled and minority girls. And I was, I've, I've worked deeply and closely with them, helping with the fundraising, help for, for their school and living and boarding and understanding some of those aspects. I think just to, you know, be there as a brother and, you know, showing, showing up once in a while was more than enough. I think applying similar principles, if not same. I think, I think one particular issue is in terms of, you know, the, the suicides and mental health issues that are happening. That's, that's cross impacting especially the community. And with kids, my kids will be ready to go to high school in like seven to nine years. I think one of the things I've learned is in terms, two things, which I would be interested. So one is, there is a responsive task force that's usually is, is set up. And then there's, there is another way of getting intermittent information in terms of some of those, some of those youth, mental health issues. I think applying some sort of a contemporary technology policies and having some form of a continuous feedback loops and leveraging some of the city's properties such as schools and libraries and parks and having continuous engagement on some of these issues will definitely help. I think those are some, some, and I'm not an insider yet, so, but understanding different departments that the city controls. It could, we could leverage everything. Thanks.
I want to jump in here. You know, the, one of the questions that you answered that something was of particular interest was the community listening session on local Muslim and Palestinian and Arab experiences.
Yeah.
And obviously that is very important to us as a community to be embracing everyone. How, how do you think we can keep this conversation going? Is it as simple as repeating the process every year so we make sure that it's on there like a regular agenda item? Or are there other things that you'd suggest?
I think all of it, I guess. One, I personally feel that some of a, a form of a continuous listening and continuous outreach is definitely one way to understand. I, I think one of the things that I've read about is the, is the, is that they would love to hear more feedback on a continuous basis. The second is obviously the second obviously is in terms of, you know, adoption of some of the, again, I mean, I don't want to get into the how aspect of, you know, the continuous feedback loops, but I think continuous feedback loop is definitely one, which constantly gets to where the second is sort of creating some sort of ambassadors in each of those community. And, and having to, because people may or may not be comfortable talking to, you know, the agent, you know, the governing agencies or, or people who are part of the commission, but they're definitely willing to talk to their faith leaders, the community members, you know, partly whomever it is. I think, I think identifying some of those ambassadors and getting the voice from them. And third is, again, identifying where and how, all that additional metadata, like doing continuous surveys. I know there's been a lot of listening sessions, but also going there and, and reaching out and then leveraging. I know there's been a lot of listening sessions, but also going there and reaching out and then leveraging youth.
I want to get to the other question, so I don't want to take up too much of your time. Councilmember Luthcut Ames?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I was going to ask a similar question, so I'm all set.
Oh, okay. Councilmember Rektal?
Yeah, thank you for applying. In your application, you said that you were the only Hindu volunteer in a Muslim-led initiative. Can you talk about that experience and did you learn anything from that?
Yes, it's deeply personal for me. I think I grew up in Hindu conservatives where there is, you know, Muslim bashing is a fun. And, you know, there's a lot of Islamophobia. And I personally don't agree with that. And one of the ways is my friend was working very closely in Aga Khan Foundation in Bay Area, where they create small events for fundraising for Aga Khan. And then I was happened to, you know, discuss with him on what he does and how they do it. And one of the things he said is, I wish we were as big as Hindu community so we could have done much bigger and broader functions and gotten, got funding. So first year I got involved by helping on social media because I work in tech and those things, you know, some of these things are very obvious in terms of outreach programs for me. So I helped them and they got huge amount of benefits. And then being the only Hindu in their mosques and sitting and listening actually inspired me in terms of the work that they're actually doing. So the second year I got involved much more deeply. And we organized an extremely big event called one of the Hindu, sorry, one of the Indian celebrities. We had like 1,000 to 1,500 people showed up. It was a big wakatan and it was hugely successful. So we did that for another year. This is how sort of I understood that I think one additional diverse voice can amplify sort of their amplify their voice significantly. So that's why I always look for opportunities where I could be the only voice which will sort of amplify other people's voice.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for applying. We have 15 seconds. I'm not sure you can get much squeezed in. But if you want to say anything, go ahead.
Yeah, absolutely. I love Palo Alto. I'm going to be staying here for 20, 15 years at least. And my kids are going to go to the college. I'm very deeply cared about few things, public health, safety, and my kids' health. So I would love to do anything to help and build and make Palo Alto sort of a role model for my kids and for rest of the families.
Great. Thanks for your enthusiasm. All right.
Our next candidate is Yonika Bose.
Hello.
Hello.
How are you?
Good. Go ahead.
Great.
Yeah, just making an opening statement that you like, and then we'll ask you questions.
Okay, okay. So I appreciate the opportunity. I came across this position through the Indian Listserve as a news group. And it said the Human Relations Commission had an opening. And the name Human Relations really kind of stuck with me. I really believe this is what we need today, the stability to listen, learn.
Could you step closer to the mic?
Exactly. So the ability to listen, learn, and collaborate with each other. I feel like we live in such a polarized world today. The gap continues to increase between the rich and the poor, Democrats, Republicans, Christians, Muslims. It is always an us and them kind of a journey, and that bothers me. So I believe it's important to stay engaged and not disengage and to try to work with others. And so especially those that might be different from you. So I was fortunate, as I grew up in India and I was fortunate to have attended an American high school, a boarding school in the Himalayas. It was a Christian international school and we had 22 different nationalities represented in my graduating class of 50. So you can imagine how diverse we were. And even though it was a Christian school, we learned about many different religions and celebrated various holidays. We learned about other cultures, the importance of respecting, collaborating, and caring for others. There was socioeconomic diversity, ethnic diversity, religious diversity, and diversity of thought. We were taught not to judge people. I learned the value that each person brings to the community, tremendous value. And we were a much stronger class thanks to our diverse backgrounds. So I learned to be curious and not always judge a book by its cover. It is this foundation that prepared me for my journey in the US. I came here on a full scholarship for my undergraduate studies. And it was a tremendous opportunity, and I'm always trying to pay this forward. In fact, with my current college counseling practice, I serve low-income freak kids free of charge and help them get into college. So I have to say, I feel fortunate. I've lived on the East Coast, Southeast. I went to graduate school in the Southeast, Midwest, and now here. I also lived in Germany for a few years. And living in these various places, I feel like I've treasured the different communities and learned so much about the regional cultures. And I really feel like we can learn from each other. So I've encouraged, I have three children. I encourage them all to study abroad, attend college far away from home, and experience other places that they might not normally. It is through these varied experiences that we learn to listen and work with one another. In fact, my daughter is currently studying in Bloomington, Indiana. And that's one of our sister cities, right? So it's kind of nice. In fact, I'm going there next week and plan to kind of talk to them about some of the neat things we are doing here and see if they're doing any of that there. One of the things I really liked about, I've liked about living in Palo Alto is it's kind of, it's a very integrated community. You know, when I was living in other parts, my father said to me, he goes, Jonaki, in New York and all, you have a little Germany, you have a little Italy, you have all these little communities, whereas here, people are all kind of integrated. And it's, and that's the beauty of this city, I think. So here, my one, you know, I have one neighbor who's Jewish, another person, another neighbor is Taiwanese, another Dutch, and we all learn from each other. And then I find, you know, within a five-minute walk of my homes, I'm a Palo Alto resident. And within a five-minute walk of my home, we have a conservative Jewish prayer hall, a Buddhist temple, a church, friends' meeting house, and I've been to all of these services. It is this diversity that I really appreciate. I've been a Palo Alto resident, as I said, for over 30 years and have attended the public schools here. We almost hosted an exchange student from Sichira, but that was the year of the tsunami. And so we were unable to host the student. However, we stayed in touch with the family and then actually visited them when my daughter and my son and I went to Japan. Professionally, I worked for a long time in corporate lending and process improvement in the financial services industry. But I always volunteered in the community. I've participated in the site council for all three, you know, the elementary schools, the middle schools, and the high schools. I'm an active member of our church, have enjoyed teaching cooking at the Palo Alto Adult School, and have even been able to teach at Wilton Court. And that has been a really rewarding experience. One of my priorities, so the other thing that I've also done, I was the executive director of a small Palo Alto nonprofit. And during the pandemic, and before, is when I was the executive director, and we really tried to work on closing the opportunity gap. One of my priorities while there was to increase salaries of the employees. So we would, they would all have a living wage and not have to depend on living on a spouse or a partner to support them. I think that organization also got grants from the Human Relations Commission. This is a little while back. My hope is to continue to build community in this town and to continue to make people of all backgrounds and cultures feel welcome. In this community, I believe we have a lot of ethnic diversity, but not so much socioeconomic diversity. And I hope to bring people together so we can learn from each other and continue to make Palo Alto a better place to live. If you were to ask me about what issues are dear to me, I would say diversity, equality, and supporting the youth in the community, especially in regards to mental health. Diversity, you got a flavor of it. I got it in my high school. The equality and equal equity of, I got that in my high school, sorry, my college. And then mental health, we've dealt with some of that within our family. I was also a residence hall director when I was in graduate school and thereafter, and did suicide crisis counseling. So those issues have always been important to me. It is the youth that I feel passionately about. They are our future, and we should nourish and support them. So they are resilient, compassionate, and develop the grit to develop, deal with the challenges we face today. So that's my statement.
Okay, thank you. We'll come to the dais for questions. Vice Mayor Baker?
Thank you, and thank you so much for applying and for your work on the Board of YCS and the Board of Dreamcatchers and working with Life Moves and Hotel Duzink and all of that. Clearly, you've been highly involved in the community. And you spoke a lot and eloquently about your care for youth mental health and our students, which I also gleaned from your application because you've been working with, as a college counselor, so that and site council at elementary, middle, and high school. But I was struck by the, where you say you're, you were an executive director of a small nonprofit serving low-income middle school students. What role or what can we do as a city for the parents of students like this, students who are struggling? And perhaps, you know, perhaps the parents don't feel like they belong here, and that could be part of the environment in which these students struggle. So do you have thoughts along those lines?
Yeah, I do. You know, actually, during the pandemic, that was kind of a, I hate, I don't mean to say, there was a blessing in there in that because we were all virtual, right? We started bringing the parents together, and so the parents started communicating with each other. And at that time, we learned that they also had housing, you know, there were some housing issues, but it was them sharing with each other, like, oh, you have this problem, I have this problem. So trying to bring people together so that they realize they are not alone. And so we started that, we did housing assistance and that also, you know, there was Palo Alto Community Fund. There were a couple of organizations that helped us with that. So I think bringing people together, I'm a big fan of community. So it just kind of bringing people together and letting them know they are not alone allows them to think. So I think that would be, I'm not sure if that answers your question, but.
Yeah, no, that's great. And I was going to stop in case others wanted to jump in because we're getting toward the end of your time, but thank you so much.
Sure.
You talk about being an agent of change. Do you have specific changes that you like to make on the HRC? And we're down to 56 seconds.
Yeah, sorry. I don't have agent of change for the HRC. I'd rather learn and listen and understand the issues. I don't see that there's something that desperately, I've done change management at work when there were processes that needed to be changed. But we kind of first went through, listened, and understood what the issues were, where we wanted to go, and then kind of worked through that. But I don't have anything for HRC per se to say this needs to be changed. I have to say, I briefly heard, listened about the listening sessions. I appreciated them tremendously. I thought that was very valuable. Where we take it from now, I don't quite know. But I would kind of rather work with the group and see where, what their priorities collectively were, and then kind of build from there.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for applying.
Our next candidate is Aji Aliad.
Oh, good evening. Should I go ahead and get started or?
Yes, I'm sorry. We're getting a water delivery, so we got.
Oh, no, that's very important. No worries.
Excited about that. Yes, just an opening statement from you is however long you want, and then we're going to ask you some questions.
All right, sounds good. Hi, everyone. Good evening. My name is Aji Olide. I'm a resident of Palo Alto. I'm originally from Georgia. I was born and raised in Georgia, went to undergrad in Georgia as well, and then moved all around the country before I ended up back up in Georgia and then moved to California for work. I'm a product of two immigrants that moved here to the United States in the 70s. And my parents went to school here, and myself and my three brothers were born and raised here. I'm a strong believer in being an integral part of whatever community I'm in and not being a spectator, right? Being an active participant, being an active, you know, member of whatever community I'm in, whether it's, you know, within church, whether it's within the community, whether it's at work, and making a difference so that, at the time when I leave, I know that I made a mark and wherever I was was better because I was there. You know, I've traveled all over the world, traveled over 35 countries, from Nepal to Argentina to Jordan. And travel has always been extremely important to me for, you know, very obvious reasons, right? It teaches you new perspectives, new different ways of living, and it makes you feel small, right? Like it makes you understand that you're a small piece of a bigger puzzle. I think, you know, one thing that's really important to me in terms of causes, and I tend to, I think, gravitate towards causes that focus on vulnerable populations. When I moved to California in 2015, I lived in San Francisco for a few years. And similar to now, I was looking for a way to get involved. And so I did some research online and came across an organization called SF Casa. So San Francisco court-appointed special advocates. And so they focus on supporting foster youth in the Bay Area, in San Francisco. And so I was on that board for three years and then subsequently rolled off of that board and started looking for other opportunities. Right now, I sit on the board of an organization called Global Glimpse. It's based out of Oakland. And we support immersive international experiences for high school seniors that, who ordinarily would not get that experience otherwise. So much of the travel experience is subsidized. And so, you know, that's one population I think I tend to gravitate towards. I have two very young children and I, you know, if you want to get me excited, you know, just say anything about children and I'm there, I'm game. And so, you know, children or youth are important to me. And then I think in addition to that, seniors as well. You know, I have an aging parents now, and that's, you know, something that's top of mind for me. And that I think about all the time, like, how can we make aging easier? You know, for, you know, seniors and their aging population. So, you know, those are some things that are, you know, near and dear to my heart. I think, you know, when you look across the dimensions of people, none of us are one-dimensional. We, you know, the many intersections and multi-dimensional, right? And so across ethnicity, you know, religion, you know, your different orientations. Like, we're all very multi-dimensional and creating a community that supports all of that. The complexity, you know, that we all bring to the table is very important to me. You know, I'm relatively new to Palo Alto area. I was living in San Jose for a few years. And prior to that, I was in Oakland. So I've moved around the Bay Area over the past 10 years or so. And I've been quite adept at, you know, getting into communities and getting, you know, involved and becoming part of those communities. And I think this is one way that I, you know, saw would be an impactful way to get back to the Palo Alto community. So thank you for listening to me and I welcome any questions you have.
Yep.
Yes.
Let's see who has questions from the dais. Lights? Councilmember Stone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for applying. I think a lot of that, kind of the core work that the HRC focuses on is really being attacked right now by the administration and kind of is a lot of DEI work, et cetera, being kind of questioned across the, across the country and parts of California as well. What do you see over the next four years as really kind of the focus that the HRC should be, should be addressing?
So in my mind, you know, I've mentioned there are two specific areas, right, that I'm interested in. One is youth and youth wellness, mental health. The others is the wellness of our aging population. I do feel, you know, I work for a tech company, a major tech company, I work for Google, and we've been impacted by those regulations, I would say, as well, right? And I would say to me, as a person, as an organization, you should always stay steadfast to what you believe in, right? And dig your heels in, and if it's the right thing to do, if it's the right thing to focus on, you do that. You focus on it regardless of what's going on externally, right? So rather than swaying with the wind or what's popular at So rather than swaying with the wind or what's popular at the time. So I am a very staunch believer that what's right is right. In most cases, there's some gray areas sometimes, right? And it's important to stay steadfast in that, and you owe it to, you know, you owe it to yourself, you owe it to your community as well. Because the people on the ground, the, you know, the children, the elderly, that they don't care about the regulations, right? Like, they care about their life day to day. Like, a lot of these things are happening external to them and, you know, outside of them, right? And I think it's important, to the extent that we can, what we can control, we control it, and we stay steadfast in what we say our priorities and our values are. I don't know if that answers your question, but okay.
Councilmember Reddall.
You mentioned that you've moved around the Bay Area, and how does living in Palo Alto compare to the other cities, and particularly our commitment and our assistance to the vulnerable populations?
From what I, so it's very nice. It's very nice. You know, there's a difference. So I lived in in San Francisco proper for a bit, off of Van Ness, so Civic Center area. I've lived in Dublin, Oakland, and San Jose, and I think all of these areas are very distinct and have their own, you know, pluses and, you know, minuses as well, relatively speaking. You know, for Palo Alto, one of the things that drew me here was sort of, you know, in the beginning, when I moved here, I didn't have children. I wasn't married. My priorities were different. So I was like, okay, let me move to San Francisco and live in a box, right? And I liked life was good, you know, and as I grew up, you know, my 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 priorities, my values changed, and I wanted to make sure that I was entrenched in a community that was very positive for my children, that provided them with a solid, you know, educational, like, standing. And that's what I had the benefit of growing up as well, and so that was extremely important to me. So to answer your question, in terms of how they differ, I would say you know, one, you know, obviously Palo Alto is esteemed for its educational system, right? Like, I think that that's a huge, huge draw that maybe separates it from, you know, other other cities in the Bay Area and the public school system in particular, right? Where I have, you know, a number of coworkers, friends that do feel the need to have to go, you know, to private schools in order to supplement, to give their children the the level of education that they're they're looking for. I would say from a, like, city planning and just availability of, you know, the niceness of the parks and the libraries and things like that that enrich your life, right? Like, you feel good when you come home. I think that that's distinct, you know, a distinct sort of value out of Palo Alto.
Is there anything that Palo Alto could improve?
You know, I think I would be remiss to speak on that just yet. I'm, you know, about two months in into living here. I was in San Jose. So right now, I think, you know, as I get more interested in the community, get more involved and and hopefully get my 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 kids more involved again, I think I'll have a more educated, data-driven response to that question.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for applying.
Thank you all.
Welcome to Palo Alto. Just a second before you start the next candidate. Vice Mayor Baker has a comment.
Yeah, I just wanted to quickly comment that I'm going to need to take my leave shortly to attend a memorial service. I will hopefully come back to the dais before we are done, but I wanted to assure all the candidates, I will watch the videos of these interviews before casting my vote. So thank you all.
Our next candidate is Sean Patrick King. Yes, Sean Patrick King. Sean Patrick King, are you in attendance? All right, moving to our next candidate. Our next candidate is Sunanda Mishra.
How is everyone doing?
You know the drill by now. Make an opening statement if you like, and then we'll take comments from there. The total amount of time is 10 minutes.
Thank you. My name is Sunanda Mishra. I have been in Palo Alto since 2009. We moved to Palo Alto for school systems. We knew about Palo Alto being the number-one school district in the area. I have been in California since 1993. I came, I'm originally from India. I came to do my master's at Oregon State University in 93 and then moved to Bay Area for my job in 96. Sorry, I said I was here in 93. I went to Oregon State University. In 96, I moved to California. I have been in Bay Area from like, in the south would be Campbell, and up north would be Menlo Park and various cities. And I worked in tech industry for a few years before I adopted my children, and I decided to be a stay-home mom. My two kids, one is a 10th grader, and one is now at San Jose State University, who graduated from Gunn High School last year. He happened to have Mr. Stern for history teacher in back in JLS for one year, and that's that was amazing. The the things that has always been of my interest is helping those who can't help themselves. I have been a volunteer for an organization called Dieva, which is a nonprofit that supports underprivileged children. They do, they're purely volunteer-based organization, and they have done amazing, like, like, projects in India as well as in in the United States. The reason for me coming here today is I want to do more and speak less in this current environment where there seems to be a lot of talk and lot of distress and lot of fights among even members in communities, and community seems to be divided. And a lot more people feel the pressure and feel the distress and sometimes feel even lost. I am particularly interested in in supporting unhoused people and also helping our teen population, which kind of right now feels being left out from the discussions and from their contributions or their future planning with the current administration kind of raising the war against LGBTQ, diversity, equity, and inclusion. I am a big supporter of inclusion irrespective of and I I am not political at all, and I find myself getting pulled into these discussions. And that's when I figured I would try to do more and speak less, and that's why I'm here today.
Okay, thank you. We'll come back to councilmember questions, and the first is from Councilmember Lithgow-Hamms.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Mishra, for applying. Appreciate it. I was drawn to a particular part of your application where you mentioned the debate in your church community about safe parking spaces and the importance of providing places for vehicle dwellers to be safe overnight versus the fear that others might have about that population, and you seem to feel some degree of concern, if not even anguish, over that. Taking that forward, knowing we need to, we have additional folks who are vehicle dwellers who do not have a safe place to park, and perhaps we need to expand the number of spots, what approach would you take if you were on the HRC to convene conversations with neighbors of faith communities, with the faith communities themselves about with the ultimate goal of of providing greater access to safe parking?
Thank you. That was just one of the examples I felt. It's very close to my heart because I, there was for a short time, my brother was homeless. Coming from a community which believes in once you are up there with your Ivy League education or from a very good financially well-settled background, you can never fall back. That's the community that I come from. That's the community where, once you've reached a stage, you can never go down, and if you do go down, it is considered as a moral failure. And I totally disagree with that. So my, when I noticed the fear, I wasn't part of that discussion. I was neither, because I'm not a part of that church. But I saw the members who are in my friend circle them showing the fear, them like, you know, discussing about the fear of how can you, because everybody who is homeless is apparently a criminal in most people's minds. If I were part of that community, where I was part of that discussion, I think there could have been more discussions where you could you could do a data-driven discussion, right? So for instance, when pandemic hit, I would drive by El Camino and would find little kids with Chromebook. And I could tell that the the family living in that that trailer wasn't a criminal. The thing was that we didn't do, I mean, as a city, I don't think we had any way of providing data on who we are trying to actually accommodate here. We might have had the data, I don't know, but to me, it's it's the fear that causes people to, like, you know, back out. If there is more communication, there is more awareness, there is more educational programs where we could bring information to the community with the help of help of community members. We do have, like, block coordinators in our in our neighborhoods. If we had flyers for the the block coordinators who could go house to house giving those information, I think it would have made it shot down.
Okay, thank you. I want to make sure we got to councilmember and teacher Stone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Sunanda, for applying. Always nice to see the parent of a former student. I'd like to catch up with you later, find out in in college now, right?
Yes.
Wow, that went fast. You 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 mentioned kind of the the growing political divide across the country and how that's kind of trickling down to our own the our own debates within the community or within families, et cetera. How do you see the HRC kind of playing a role in in navigating these next few years and, right, the the villainization of DEI and and other issues? What's the HRC's role to be able to kind of push back against that, if that is the HRC's role in your view?
Yes. So I watched the HRC's last meeting where 20 organizations, 20 NGOs, nonprofits were being funded. I was blown away by the work that each of these organizations do and how it affects Palo Alto, Palo Alto community. What I feel is that whenever I am in a group where people are pushing back on DEI, people are saying, oh, transgender is like, you know, polluting our schools. What they're missing is they're not seeing the work that actually directly affects our community. So to me, HRC, unless, nobody is going to watch that two-hour meeting. But for those who watch, they can convince people that it's our community is together in solving problems. They're not divided. And I think I could take that two-hour meeting and create a, like, like, a like a three-page PowerPoint which could be given to community members where they know that we are we are we are in agreement on so many things, but we just so focus always on what we disagree on. That's what I feel.
Thank you very much for applying.
Thank you.
And for your words.
Okay, and our last candidate for the Human Relations Commission is Jessica Nelson. She'll be attending on Zoom.
Hello?
Hi, Jessica. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Thank you so much.
Yes, if you if you've been watching, you'll see that our format is to that you can make an opening statement of however long you want, and then we're gonna ask questions after that, and the the whole thing lasts about 10 minutes.
Okay, awesome. So should I go ahead and start? With my opening?
Yes, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay, perfect. Well, thank you, guys, for the opportunity to speak with you all as a resident of Palo Alto. I'm also a mother. I have a student that's a freshman at Gunn High School and also have three small children, a three-year-old and a one-year-old that are also involved in the Palo Alto community. Also, I'm a Realtor for California, and I serve as a director on the San Antonio County Realtor Foundation Board. This is my first term, and as a resident of Palo Alto for six years, I just want to be able to give back in a way that is effective, and all the amazing things that you guys are doing in the city that I've benefited as a resident is what encouraged me to apply for the position. So with that being said, any questions? You guys can go ahead and start the interview.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Reddall?
Yeah. Thank you for applying. In your application, you mentioned you have a nonprofit, Pinnacle Coast Global. Can you talk about that?
Yes, absolutely. So a little bit, let's start with my background. I started in property management in the East Oakland area with not really any knowledge, but through that experience, I learned that the community that that I was managing lacked a lot of resources and just needed a lot of opportunity, and with that, I created Pinnacle Coast at the time. I had unfortunately lost my brother to suicide, which kind of shifted things, but I had developed my skill as a manager and also developed some skills to better create that nonprofit to be a little bit more successful. And I reopened that recently, and I'm starting to, you know, build that back up from start, yeah.
What sort of services do you provide?
So while I was there, I offered sources like tutoring, helping do mock interviews, just kind of helping people elevate, whether it was job opportunities, also being resourceful as far as getting them in contact with legal aid regarding like rent, stuff like that. And just kind of being an overall connector, I kind of would call Pinnacle Coast a hub of nonprofits where I would utilize the connections I had to nonprofits in the area to make sure that people with needs were directed to the best resources. And that all started again at the property that I was serving, and it was really successful. I had got the city of Oakland involved. I had I had some, a couple of churches get involved where we were able to deliver groceries for free to the community. We held several events with police officers and the fire department to engage with the community and create relationships, and that was really successful. And in turn, we were able to drop the crime rate in the area. Pinnacle Coast mobilized the youth in the area and also adults as well to start cleaning up the neighborhood. And this was all started with just wanting to help the community. And so we held our first event at the defmery. And so we held our first um event at the defmery, um which is located um in Oakland as well. And we're able to do our first turkey drive, and that was well received and um, yeah, so we do, I mean, it's just again more of like a a hub for nonprofits.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah, in a couple of places on your application, you talk about particularly the, I guess, the third question that, you know, you really want to help create uh you have a goal to create more opportunities for affordable housing. Uh, as you know, the city's been working on that passionately uh for a number of years, and it's really hard to make that. So do you have some specific ideas? I know you you say you've worked in housing solutions for undeserved populations. Do or do you have some new ideas that we can put into into play or that you want to at least uh surface?
Yeah, definitely. So in my experience, um, you know, being a young mother, had my eldest, that's a freshman now at twenty, and being in the area that I was in, although I was able to develop and create these different opportunities for everyone, I myself needed to navigate back, I'm actually from San Jose, back to um kind of strengthen my skill in in property management. And um through that navigation, um I was able to see the different demographics, um, the different way of living. So from Oakland to Hayward to San Jose, I was in North San Jose for some time. And then to Palo Alto, I've been here for some time. You, I'm able to see these drastic contrastes, contrasts um between these different communities, and I'm able to identify. Um, you know, obviously, there's a gap in wealth, obviously, in the area, being that it's, you know, Palo Alto, but um even then, as a property manager now, I'm also a property manager of a property here, and um it's still really hard. So I think that there's a, there's a couple of different ways that it can be approached. Um, I think something needs to be in place where it's uh some type of program, uh supportive situation, but it's met with like an expectation, like a deadline uh where it's promoting kind of like growth rather likes than stagnation. I feel like a lot of subsidy programs like that kind of promote uh support, but don't really push uh people. So there, again, there's a lot of different ways that I feel like it can be approached um through my experience in these different areas that I think can be benefited um in that effort to address uh affordable housing um in Palo Alto.
Okay, thanks. Any other comments from council members? See, none. If you want to summarize your candidacy, feel free to do so now.
Yeah, so um I feel like I'd be a great candidate with the experience and background that I have and um, again, as being a resident that um, again, it is currently occupied in housing and understanding the different fluctuations in market rates and um being able to recognize those different trends um can be useful. But aside from that, I think a lot of the different things that you guys cover and what you guys are doing is definitely amazing. Um, again, with my daughter being a freshman, she has, we've got experienced a lot of uh mental health issues in this area, and that's something that I know that you guys had a project for um that I definitely want to back as having um and having, you know, some losses in that area too. So again, I think I could be a real resource to uh the committee uh for the partial term that you guys are offering.
Okay. Thank you very much for applying.
Thank you for your time. You guys have a great evening.
All right, thanks.
All right, we'll be moving on to our next commission, which is the Utility Advisory Commission. Just a reminder for candidates, it's a ten minute interview. Um, you'll have an opportunity for a brief opening statement and then questions from council members. And if time allows, you may make a closing statement. So moving on to our next candidate, UAC for the Utilities Advisory Commission, Craig Barney.
Thank you. I'm glad I'm here at the right time. I was here a week early last week. Um, I have been a part of the environmental management field since my first days in graduate school in nineteen eighty and have been involved in environmental management and chemical manufacturing, chemical research, and more recently at Stanford University. I have experience in wastewater treatment chemistry and a background in air pollution chemistry as well. So my interest in the advisory committee is from that perspective, from a matter of protecting the environment. Um, I know that sustainability is not within the realm of the committee, but I feel that environmental protection is an important part of delivering utilities to customers. And so that's my reason for applying for this position. I have some experience on on Palo Alto committees. I was on the compost committee that was probably ten years ago now, um where we uh looked at various options for compost for the city of Palo Alto's organic waste. I also was part of the citizens uh um CBDG, which had to do with grants in the city of Palo Alto I when I first came to town. Been a resident for thirty some years. My kids all graduated from Palo Alto schools or all moved away. And I'm looking to retirement. I'll be leaving Stanford on June second, uh so I'm looking for um to engage, get more engaged in the city of Palo Alto as part of this.
Okay, thank you. Councilmembers, comments, questions? Councilmember Lou?
Thank you. I believe we actually met. I may have planted a tree at your home or your neighbor's home uh last summer, but anyways. Um, you mentioned fiber to home a couple uh a couple of times um in your application. Can you talk about your perspectives and uh if you disagree with any or have strong opinions about any of the uh recent decisions like the pilot area and uh the use of funds and things like that?
Well, I was glad to see that a pilot was launched. Um, yes, I mean, we invented the internet here in Palo Alto, and the fact that we don't have fiber to our homes, I think, is a disgrace. So I really think we should push to getting fiber to the homes in town here. I know there's a lot of obstacles and a lot of interests involved in that, but I'm very interested in pushing for that piece to be in place. Plenty of other towns have it, as you well know.
Uh, just a quick follow up. How do you think about the financial trade offs and what to prioritize now versus other kind of critical utilities projects or, you know, balancing the risks and funding?
Well, I have to admit, I'm not aware of the all the financial things that the city is looking at now. I will say, though, my experience in environmental management, because I've operated in a program at Stanford, which is um operational in nature. And one of the things I've always looked for when I'm operating that program is cost, because uh protecting the environment can cost money and trying to do it as effectively as possible is critical. Part of the reason I stayed at Stanford all these years is because they are, they do mean to do the right thing, and they do make uh resources available when needed. So I don't know what the balancing act is uh in the city. I'd be welcome the opportunity to take a look at that.
Okay, Councilmember Bert?
Thank you. Uh, good to see you, Craig. Uh, you you didn't mention that uh in your years with the community, you were thirty years ago uh graduated Leadership Palo Alto, so you know the community well. As you may or may not be aware, we've um, we have um uh two incumbents who have been strong incumbents for um two openings. So uh this go round is one where we'll probably have a tough decision looking at other candidates. But one of the things that we've really appreciated about our multiple commissions, UAC in particular, is the the incredible depth of of candidates that we've received. Um, so in that context, what you you mentioned that you really wanted to make sure that our utilities are looking at what we do from a sustainability lens. Um, are there some examples that you um think we should give greater attention to than we have? Or areas that you simply would want to focus on in that context?
So one of the things that I uh experiences at Stanford for these this period has been with the city of Palo Alto wastewater treatment plant, because I'm sure you understand our laboratories discharged to the sewage treatment plant. And controlling that to so that the sewage treatment plant can function effectively is critical. And so part of what I've done along with Julia Nussbaum and the Water Group is look at how we can control those materials being discharged down the drain that could harm the plant. On the reverse side, I think sometimes um the plant takes a too strict opinion on chemicals. Um, that that treatment plant can in fact remove pollutants from the wastewater, and I think sometimes their approach is a little too strict. Again, that comes from my my background and looking at cost and benefit. Um, so that would be one area I'd be very interested in is the wastewater treatment plant and its operations. I actually was a chemist at a sewage treatment plant way, way back in the city of San Pablo.
Uh, Councilmember Rekdo?
Uh, in your application, you mentioned that uh you're very concerned about increasing our green energy portfolio. Can you talk about that? What kind of things are you looking at?
Well, as you know, um Stanford built a solar plant down in the central, uh south of Central Valley, a large one uh which is providing uh solar power to the grid. Uh, just to the grid, it's not for Stanford's use. Um, but that kind of facility, I think, is very, very important because it can be effective and efficient. Can pick the right location, you can track the sun, you can find land that's affordable. And I think that kind of, I'm not that I'm suggesting City Palo Alto bu- build one, but that su- supporting that kind of activity, I think, is critical.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other questions. So would you like to do a summary statement?
Final thing I would like to say is that as part of my application at Stanford, I got a question from one of the fellows who was with the school medicine at the time, it was after a long round of questioning. And he asked me who I'd root for in big game. Well, being a Cal graduate, I said, well, Cal, of course. And later I asked him why he asked that question. I said, I had nothing to do with anything about this position. And he said, I, just trying to see if I was honest. So I guess if I'd said Stanford, I would not have got the job. So I would still have wrote for Cal.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate you applying.
Our next candidate is Olgu Tan Riverdi.
Hello. Good evening.
The the format is you can make an opening statement, if you like, of any amount of time, and then we'll ask you a bunch of questions, and uh then you can do a summary if there's time at the end, and the total is ten minutes.
Okay, um, either way, it's fine. By me, so should I do my?
No, no, you you should give an opening statement if you like, and then uh we'll ask the questions after that.
Okay, um, so the reason I'm interested in this position because I work for two largest utilities in California, PG&E and Southern California Edison, each almost five years each, so total of ten, which um cover from introduction to MRTU, which is novel based pricing, which California didn't have that before, they had the regional pricing um compared to not um more granular um peanut based pricing. And I got involved with RFO evaluations to market design, changes to impacts on the company's um revenue. Um, any, you know, market design changes, the way it impacts the company to um number of contracts the company has, which allows company to operate, to recruit um um energy from either contractor, their own own utility or their power generate generating units. And the market design changes impact all these contracts and the way we operate. Um, and depending on the mandates, we need to recover, for example, um electric storage units, which we go after um RFO proposals and receive all the offers and evaluate them one by one. Um, and but the idea is provide safe, um reliable and cost efficient energy to the public. And with my background, I I thought that this would be a good position for me to come and help.
Okay, thank you. We'll take questions from the DICE. Um, I would, I would start by saying that you did spend ten years with two electric companies, and then you spent five year with games. So how did you go from PG&E to PlayStation? It sounds like your uh um tagline.
Um, yeah, this this, I I I accept it's a little unusual. Ju- just because I, my my background is electrical engineering, but as a employee, I work as an engineer as well as data scientist, which allow me to do um almost everything. For example, when I was a PG&E, I was under treasury if I wasn't under engineering, because I was doing the financial RFO evaluations, you know, evaluating the contracts to see how each contract can help us. Um, again, the same thing, safe, reliable, and least cost dispatch or least cost power procurement. But at the same time, I'm versatile. I, you know, got into the coding and I built tools for us to actually build tools for us to evaluate those contracts, because, you know, there's so many of them, and you want to do some automation.
Yeah, well, you go ahead. I would say you clearly still have interest in electric. I would just, I was just fascinated by how you made the move career wise, but you still avocationally are quite interested in this, I'd say.
That's right. I mean, I spent ten years. I'm I'm, I would call myself more than average person when it comes to energy generation policies and um procurements of energy, um transmission systems, peanut oil pricing, and I mean, I was in Southern Cal, so I'm familiar with the LA area and then PG&E is, which is northern. PG&E is a little bit different because they have gas as well, but um you know, cost recovery, below the line, above the line, you name it, RFO processes and um it it really captures most of most of the areas, I would say, like resource adequacy, they have different procedures.
Um, okay, that's good. So uh Councilmember uh Rekdo?
Yeah, so I see you're a Fortran programmer.
Yes, that's interesting, right?
I spent a lot of time on Fortran, although now I'm C++ but I still have a soft spot for Fortran. Uh, you mentioned that you did Monte Carlo's looking at the distribution of the risk exposure.
That's right.
How do you determine the the distribution of the commodity prices?
Yeah, so what what we do is um, so the interesting thing is that contracts or as well as giving an energy producing unit is not linear, which means, you know, if the price is ten dollars, just an example, given hour, if your revenue is ten dollars, just make it simple. If the price goes to twenty, it doesn't mean your revenue is going to go twenty, so it's not linear. So as a result, um, and the prices are changing. So we had to run Monte Carlo simulation to get the idea. So the way we do is we actually created, I created ten thousand generating points, basically given twenty four hour pricing. I created distribution of um ten thousand twenty four hour pricing. So given the day, we have ten thousand pricing and then run through our um least costs, least costs internally built. It's not external product, there are external products, but I was running, that's why Fortran comes in.
Yeah.
So I, yeah, run it. So then look at the uh distribution of the output, which is, you know, the cost revenue, and then we get it.
And
at this understanding.
Were you able to value add there?
Yeah, so but ba- based on that output, we we can see the distribution of the cost as well as distribution of the revenue, which would give us um confidence interval of, you know, what's likelihood that we're going to get beyond this, like what's our exposure, what's our cost, what's our revenue is going to be. Um, so it just gives a little bit better indication than just using one twenty four hour numbers in a given day.
And
we we kind of covered the almost all sample space, I would say, with ten thousand points.
And what uh conclusions that draw, big picture conclusions about risk and mitigating risk?
Um, so it's, so ba- based on a given contract, because we run in the simulation, we put like hundreds, more than hundreds contracts. And then we we get to evaluate each contract's impact to the portfolio. Because, you know, again, each Because, you know, again, each contract is or each unit is nonlinear. So you cannot, sometimes, you know, given two units doesn't necessarily mean it's going to give you the same output because one might be a wind unit, the other one might be solar. You know, they have date of time generation as well as, you know, gas units is different profile. So by running in a simulation with a bunch of price points, it gives us a better indication of what the, you know, how the generation is going to look like.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Lou?
Thank you. I'm not sure if Palo Alto runs, you know, these kinds of Monte Carlos or at least not at the level sophistication presumably as a larger utility. So my question is, what are some best practices or kind of changes in the market or other things that you think Palo Alto or similar smaller utilities could learn or should try to adopt from the larger utilities? Yeah, what's a good priority? Yeah.
Yeah, I I look at this a really mild question. But I would again go back to those three main points, which is least cost, reliable and safe. Based on that guidance, you know, if you're given, I'm I'm not sure, you know, what kind of contracts we are signing these as, but probably like maybe electric storage related. So we can look at, you know, electric storage, you know, we look at how many cycles the given electric storage is utilized, that's depending on the price. So the number of cycle, the number of utilization, it creates tension on the units, which, you know, that we also, there's a coefficient, we can calculate how the degradation is going to happen. And there is a fire factor as well. So that's kind of addresses the safety section. Lease costs, again, depending on the units, we we run and evaluate to see what the revenue is going to bring. And reliability comes in when the unit is is going to be available, you know, like wind, solar, depending on the data of time, they're not going to be available. So we should take all of them into consideration. And in terms of integration, I need to look, that's a really broad question to see. I'm I'm familiar with how we are procuring or at reasonable level, I would say, for Southern California Edison and PG&E. But I'm not fully familiar with Palo Alto, you know, what's the megawatt level and how many contracts do we have? That one, I'm I'm a little bit limited. But I'm hope to learn while I'm here, so I can help.
Okay, thank you. There's 47 seconds left. If you want to do a summary statement?
Yeah, so the reason I'm I'm interested in this position because I I truly believe I can I can come and help. The council, I I have seen the YouTube videos from previous meetings. Especially hearing about the NAM changes that Governor Newsom, I think he has an executive order to change those, some of the contracts, which now one and NAM two might be subject to. So th- these are the areas that I can come and help if if needed in terms of evaluation or advice.
Okay. Thank you very much for applying.
All right, thanks.
Our next candidate is Rachel Croft.
Good evening, Commissioner Croft.
Good evening, Marila.
I think you've seen the routine this morning or this afternoon, so you can
Oh, you mean like how the time goes?
No, well, the time goes, but we're, we don't usually say this, but we're running a little bit ahead. So we're glad you're here.
Oh, yeah.
Early, but just, you know, give a statement in advance if you like and
Yeah, sure. Thanks. So I'm Rachel Croft. I'm currently serving a partial two year term and I'm seeking a next term. My interest in the UAC stemmed from my interest, my desire to make an impact on climate and sustainability. And I see utilities as major level levers in achieving climate goals. My background is 30 years in healthcare, marketing, finance and strategy. And the eight most recent years were in a company applying behavior science to smoking cessation. So I've talked to some of you about it in my last time being up here. But I still continue to believe there's a huge role to play of behavior science in the utilities and the challenges we have ahead for S cap as well as just management of the utility. So in my two years on the UAC, I've weighed in on important areas of investment. I've given input on grid modification, including advocating for more detailed planning around new technologies that will enable us to move towards the grid of the future, such as vehicle to grid, smart panels, demand side management. I've served on the finance committee for two years, delving more deeply into cost drivers for our recent larger rate increases and suggesting ways to mitigate increases. I've also pushed for visibility to the financial model for fiber to the premises to understand the questions we'll need to answer in the upcoming pilot to determine whether we want to make more significant investments going forward. And importantly for me, we have opportunity to influence behavior to achieve the S capping utility goals. For example, with the future rollout of time of use rates, we have an opportunity to change customer behavior by shifting load to cheaper, cleaner energy. I've advocated for early review and benchmarking with other utilities where time of use is working well. And I've encouraged CPAU to develop a knowledge base around technologies to assist customers as we roll it out, to modify their behavior, to make the most of time of use rates. And as we achieve full rollout of AMI, we face the challenge of how to get customers to engage with their data and want to change. And this is where I look forward to contributing my experience. For example, wastewater has the Water Smart Portal, but I understand the engagement with that portal is quite low, like 20% of people actually look at it. So there's definitely an opportunity to get that data in front of more people. And then I have, I think last time I was up here, I showed how I track my own gas usage in my house and the various modifications I've made to my house and how that impacts my gas usage over multiple years. And so I've seen what those changes do and that kind of sharing those kinds of case studies, I think, out to the community might help more people decide that they want to make some changes. So I'm honored to serve. I've really enjoyed my time and hope to serve another term.
Okay, thanks very much. First question from the dais is Councilmember Burt.
Thank you. So Rachel, I I'm interested in your thoughts on how what we have, which is, I think, an exceptionally strong UAC and their range of expertise and a a whole set of different domains related to utilities. Do you feel that the UAC is adequately empowered for the the voice of the commission to have the influence that you'd like it to have on both the staff and the council?
Yeah, it's a good question. It's one we've discussed actually in our UAC meetings. So one of the things is we're we're appointed by you, basically, to advise you on decisions to make for the city. And yet our meetings are one on one with, they're with staff, right? So I do think that we have an exceptionally capable UAC, like the meetings are incredible. They get very detailed. We go late every time. Everyone's interested in every subject. And so I think it's a great, you know, board of capabilities. I think we are still working through how best to deliver our findings to you so that you hear clarity from the UAC on on what we're thinking. I don't see a lot of mismatches in what you eventually decide, but sometimes there are things like, for example, charging some extra pennies on gas to build up a little reserve in case gas prices spike. I think we had a specific recommendation there and we didn't come to you to present it. So I think your decision was slightly different than what we recommended, which we're fine with that happening, but we we discussed that maybe we should have somebody come as a representative to talk to you directly on that. And so we have kind of decided that if we have a significant decision where we think we should have an advocate here, that we should do that. But we have not started doing that yet.
And I I should have added as a part to the question, do you think that the UAC is by the nature of the way that you're presented issues by staff is forced to be more reactive than proactive?
On some topics, in general, I think it's it's quite good, but there are some things where we'd like to see a pre meeting, right? Having a pre meeting where there's a decision point so that there, if there is input, if there are questions that we have, that it can be presented to us again and iterated. So we have suggested that as well. So in my preamble, I kind of discussed time of use rates. We have not been presented with any, you know, theoretical time of use rates. Or in the area of technology and integrating with the grid, we've asked multiple times as staff to tell us what they're seeing, what they're thinking about in terms of integrating other technologies, vehicle to grid or distributed energy resources. And we haven't got a lot of detail on it yet to actually opine. We've just been asking. So on those things, we hope that there is continued that they'll bring to us things before we have to make a decision. And we haven't gotten to the point where we we haven't had a chance to, so I wouldn't complain. But yes, there are some areas that we could have iterative meetings. They just go long. So that I think that's a challenge every week is to, or every month to decide what's on the agenda.
Other council, other council members? Councilmember Stone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for reapplying. I had a question kind of similar to Councilmember Burt. I know you're filling a partial term, always a bit of a learning curve when joining any any commission. What's the, what's the main thing you've kind of learned during your partial term that you feel like you're going to be better suited going into a second term to be able to address?
Yeah, I mean, I think there's definitely a pretty big learning curve. We don't come to the utility meetings hardly anyone attends from the public. And so when you come in, you're learning about the cadence of what the city has to do every year and the challenges of running an entire utility, which with just, you know, a few hundred people for a whole city. So it is quite amazing what we do here in the city of Palo Alto and you realize we have a limited staff. And so you can, you have kind of a portfolio of projects that they can be put on. And so for me, learning about the capabilities of the staff, learning about the cadence of the things we're we're doing throughout the years, learning about long term projects where we're opining on something that's been, you know, a long time in the works, but now we're hitting decision points where we need to go forward. And so there is a buildup, I think, of knowledge. We've lost some long term members recently. And so I'd say we all have relatively short terms or tenure so far. And so we all, when we come into the UAC, say, well, I'm new to the board, you know, I'm new to the UAC. So what's, you know, needing background on things? So I just say there's a vast amount of knowledge in the staff and so that helps a ton. We can ask questions. But, you know, grid mod was entirely new for me, just learning what are the nuts and bolts of having to do that. Pretty much every area of the utility is new to me because I come from behavior science and healthcare. So it's been a big learning curve.
Any other quick comments from the dais? All right, you got a few seconds if you want to summarize?
Sure. Thank you so much for considering my candidacy. I've learned a ton, really enjoy, I'm energized by working on the UAC and hope I can continue. So thank you.
Great, thank you.
Our next candidate is Barry Wolf.
Hi, good evening, city council members. My name is Barry Wolf. I'm a biochemical engineer. I actually did mechanical engineering undergraduate. And since being a child, I've been interested in science, the world around us and building systems and products to make human life better. I've been employed as a research scientist slash engineer in the biopharma industry for about 25 years. But I've been a car and a bicycle enthusiast for far longer than that. I even took the bike to Caltrain today to work in South San Francisco and back, so not in the car today. In the past decade, I've become keenly interested in solar, photovoltaic, EVs, charging infrastructure, grid reliability, hydropower, battery, energy, stationary storage. And I've been, yeah, interested in this for about a decade. I've been driving an EV since 2015. I've got a few charging stations at home. Don't have a gas car anymore. Got rid of my last gas car. So I'm well aware of kind of the whole electric, how important the grid is. And, you know, obviously the city, I think, wants to have a future where as much as possible is electric. And I think the city is already like one of the, has the highest per capita ownership of EVs. But in any case, when it comes to electric grid, I'm certainly aware of all the problems that PG&E has caused and still causes today and how poorly it treats its, the citizens in its area. And I'm so glad that Palo Alto has its own utility and actually cares about the, you know, the people it serves as opposed to investors. So I think that's a great, great part of living in the cities that we have our own utility. Now, I understand being a member of the utilities advisory commission is more than just the electric grid. But again, being an engineer, I'd be glad to assist with any aspects of the purview of the of utility like potable water delivery, sewage system, trash collection. But I guess my interest is probably electric grid and because I see so many challenges with grids around the country, but even in California. And here, I think because of the climate and the abundant solar and the rapid advancement of batteries technology that we have an opportunity to really take advantage of that and improve the reliability of the grid here in town and I think even probably reduce costs for for citizens, for electricity. So I did take a brief look at the 2023 plan and for the for the city in terms of electricity. And I did see some mention of adding battery energy storage. I think one of one of the new technologies that wasn't mentioned in there is the whole aspect of V to H, you know, vehicle to home. I'm not sure about vehicle to grid myself, but, you know, of course, if someone has solar, they have a battery vehicle that happens to be bidirectional. Not that they're all bidirectional right now, but many of them are. If you can provide energy to the home, say during peak periods, do some peak shaving, I think it could help the utility maybe reduce the need for improving certain aspects of the infrastructure. I know I've read about the need for adding new transformers or maybe replacing existing transformers because the capacity that's required isn't going to, isn't going to, isn't going to be sufficient. But if we could instead, you know, decentralize that and actually have people generating their own solar, which I know the city already encourages, but then also having the additional aspect of having a battery at home, not just one that's necessarily on the wall, but one that's on four wheels, I see that as a great opportunity. Maybe for this position, that's that's too, that's too far in advance. I think I did see in 2041, the city's looking to have 25, I think it was 25 megawatts backup for four hours. So I did a quick back of the envelope calculation. I thought maybe we could, you could meet that with 20% of the single family homes in the city. Now, I don't know if that's, if that's feasible, you know, I'm a novice to this, but certainly we have lots of EVs in town. The EV ownership is certainly rising. So maybe we could use that to our advantage and and reduce the cost of meeting all the electricity demands in the future. And again, just for me at home, I do have a heat pump water heater that I got through the city's program. Of course, I've got, I've got three EVs. I have two charging stations. So I use it for my electricity, but if I could give back to the city and help out manage the grid, I think that that would be great. In any case, just in summary, you know, I'm I'm an engineer who has an avid interest in kind of electrical grid and EVs and batteries. And again, I'd be glad to help. I'm excited to help in other areas too and hope you consider my candidacy.
Okay, thank you. Returning to the dais, council members? Councilmember Burt?
Yes, so in addition to the Utilities Advisory Commission and the areas that that you've expressed a lot of interest in, have you followed the City Council's Committee on our Sustainability and Climate Action Plan?
I mean, I've read a little bit about it, probably from the from the local newspaper. Yes.
Okay, and just curious whether that's an area that you have an interest in engaging with? And from all that you've said, it seems like that's a great deal of your your enthusiasm.
I mean, for sure, yes, sustainability is, yes, I think it's very important. I I think also that on the other hand, I mean, if you want to convince people to to do things that are sustainable, I think focusing on cost, maybe that's an easier route. I think probably in the city, there are plenty of people, you say sustainable, that's good enough. But I think based on what I've seen in politics recently, maybe you don't want to put that first necessarily. If you're talking about upgrading things, but reducing costs, certainly. And I I'm keenly aware And I am keenly aware of how important sustainability is. I remember, you know, as a young child, reading about the greenhouse effect and thinking how far away it was. But we got a pretty hot day today. So it's here.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Councilmember Reckel.
Yeah, thank you for applying. You mentioned V to H and V to G. Do you view that as something that the city should explicitly encourage? Or is that something that just the marketplace by having time of day charging that will just happen spontaneously?
I'm not, I guess I'm I'm not sure about V to G. I think that's pretty complicated. I think maybe focusing on V to H first, because I think it does help the grid. If but I think I think there probably has to be some encouragement. Because again, the vehicle has to be bidirectional. There's probably some hardware required at the home. But from what I've seen so far, I think it does make sense to have the bidirectionality in the vehicle and and have the have that as an AC modality as opposed to DC. But I know there are there are subsidies available for other electrification aspects at homes in Palo Alto. So I would say it should be encouraged.
So would you support, for example, the city subsidizing the electric changes that needed to support V to H?
I mean, potentially, I don't know how much. But yeah, I think if especially if we if the city believes that by encouraging V to H, that it would take some load off the general infrastructure within the city, say, you wouldn't have to upgrade transformers or neighborhood grid systems, then I do see a benefit to the city as a whole.
And is there any other things that city should be doing to encourage electrification?
Well, I know you've got the heat pump water heater. Yeah, I mean, heat pumps for home heating and cooling. Of course, that's an air conditioner and on the cooling side. I know, I think there's been some retreat on the on limiting gas. I know there've been some some legal issues, maybe political issues with that. I know the city is still trying to move that ahead as best it can. I think that's that's a valuable mission as well. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay. So you know other comments? You want to do a summary of your candidacy?
Okay. Again, my name is Barry Wolf. I'm yeah, professional. Oh, not professional, but I'm, you know, my career is an engineer. I have a hobby with, you know, with batteries and EVs. And I'm trying to understand how grids work. And I mean, I would love to like help that advance in the city. I do think electrification is a big. It's it's an aspect of the the future that we need to start thinking about now seriously. And not that you haven't, but I think there's some new aspects that we can incorporate. But yeah, as an engineer, I would love to help out anywhere I could with the city utilities.
Great. Thank you very much for your application.
Thanks.
Our next candidate is Phil Metz.
Welcome, Commissioner.
Thank you. Good evening, folks. Shall I start with a statement?
Yes.
Well, I think to sum it up, I'm Phil Metz. I'm a current commissioner on UAC seeking a second term. I think that I'm especially well qualified for this commission. My background includes senior executive management, including VP level large manufacturing company, very strong technology background, including PhD in physics, and a strong experience in the energy field, both energy as a subject, but also the energy industry, particularly utilities. In terms of goals, I'd like to see CPAU continue its leadership as a utility. I think historically, that's what it's fit. And I think can be both for the benefit of the community and also is to show the path for others. In terms of accomplishments, I think I've had some accomplishments in my tenure as commissioner in terms of helping to get the grid modernization effort online. I think we've had kind of superficial presentations on that topic, which the commission is increasingly getting into more detail. Energy preparedness is one of the top areas that's of interest to me. I think the utility has done a good job in terms of being prepared for the water utility. But there's much more to do in the electrical utility to be prepared for emergencies. And also fiber to the home. This is an area where I'd say I have less background than in the energy space. But I was the commission's subcommittee, which I think deserved credit for getting that off the ground. I mean, fiber to the home was a topic that had been worked on in the city for, I think, like 20 years. And eventually, I think we sort of found the strike zone where we get a program that wasn't a ridiculous amount of upfront capital investment and yet would get moving. So I'm proud of that accomplishment and would like the opportunity to follow through and continue.
Okay, thanks. I love the lead off of the question. I am the advisor to the UAC for people that are watching. So I've seen you push back on staff a lot and saying not only do we need more quantity of stuff, but we need to get it done faster, which frankly, I appreciate. But you also say, as you say in your application, you know, we need to be using new technologies. So we all know that using new technologies that aren't here is kind of hard to bet on. But planning without them and you get there and what you've done is obsolete is ridiculous. So how do you think we need to thread the needle on using new technologies that are not quite ready yet? So we could go as fast as possible on grid mod?
It's a hard problem. I think the current plan of record is essentially shifting the the allotment of electricity per residence from three kilowatt hour, three kilowatt load to six kilowatt load.
Stay close to that mic.
Okay, is that okay? Yeah. And I think working with Commissioner Phillips, we've written the letter to the to the utility commission memo. And basically, what we're saying is that we need to think about, well, what are the technologies coming down the road? Based on my consulting experience, the approach I would use is a scenario based approach to look at different options. But I I think the main thing is to anticipate some of the technologies and other exogenous kind of forces, notably S cap, one of you folks mentioned S cap before. We have a big plan in the city for that. But I would say the utility is not 100% ready for that. There's also regulatory change because of the glut of renewable energy, certain times of the day, particularly solar during midday. The regulatory and legal environment in the state is changing quite rapidly. So I think we need to take those things into account. Your point, it's not easy to do that. Absolutely true. But I think some of the things we can anticipate, certainly the S cap goals are pretty well defined. On the technology side, I think it's obvious that EVs are going to be ubiquitous. Remember, in the electric utility, you have to be thinking, you know, 20, 30 or more years down the road. Most of the UAC discussion is addressing decisions that somebody made in 1975 or something, or something like that. So we need to be thinking about folks 20 years from now, what they're going to be deciding. And I think it's clear that, for example, EVs are going to be ubiquitous. And, you know, how the utility needs to get in front of that parade. Doing that's not easy, but recognizing the need to do it is the first step.
Yeah. Thank you. Councilmember Burt.
Thank you. So Phil, you've already touched on questions that I'm interested in, as you heard me ask Rachel as well. So in order to be able to further those efforts at looking over the horizon and really be planning five, 10, 20 years and and trying to anticipate the evolution in technologies, which we all know is very imprecise, but a great deal is happening that's very positive in that arena. Do you have any thoughts on how we, as a relatively small utility, a very hardworking, capable city staff who's implementing a lot of different programs in our our climate action plan and other utilities efforts? How might we be able to leverage resources with either the CCAs or Stanford or otherwise to really be able to expand our capabilities beyond our own internal capacity?
Well, I think Stanford's, you know, obvious, you know, world class level center of expertise right next door with a couple of different energy institutes. So I think that's a good one. I think there are a number of things we can do. One, for example, is pilots. I mean, sort of some obvious things that you do when when you're in a very uncertain environment and conducting pilots and just trying out different things like what happens, vehicle to grid, you know, we can pontificate about what might happen. But I mean, you can actually try it and see in a small scale and and see what happens. You could also benchmark, as an example. I think Hawaii in particular, the Hawaiian utilities have very, very difficult problems. Because as you know, most of the Hawaiian islands, there's a part of the island where there's no people and you there are no roads. And so the grid tends to be very scraggly. And it has some of the features of what we face in having distributed energy resources. So I think you can, two things are benchmarking. And I mean, obviously, analysis is the third thing, but benchmarking and doing pilots are are two things I'd like to see us doing more to to address that kind of problem.
Other comments from council members? All right. You want to do a summary of your candidacy?
Sure. Well, I I think CPAU is really a gem of the utility. It's organization that I was familiar with long before I had any involvement. It's just respected throughout, literally throughout the world. This Austin Energy, a few other utilities, I think really are unique. And it's it's been because it's it's been a leader historically, and I think in many ways, it's been prescient. I mean, you think about the discussion almost a century ago, when fossil fuel is dirt cheap. And somebody said, hey, why don't we buy a share of hydroelectric dam? You can just imagine what that conversation was like at that time. And here we are benefiting incredibly from that decision. And I'd like to see us keep making decisions like that. I think I have the qualification to help contribute to that. And I'd like to be able to have the opportunity to do it.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate your reapplication. Thanks.
And our last candidate is Claude Ezra.
Good evening, council members, and thank you so much for the opportunity to be interviewed. I will start by talking briefly about myself. And then I will tell you why what I'm interested in in terms of issues related to the CPAU and and why I'm interested in these issues. Starting by myself, you know, I'm an electrical engineer by training. I have a good understanding and interest relative to energy issues. I've visited earlier in my life many power plants and I understand also many of the transmission issues. In fact, I just signed up to visit Stanford Central Energy Facility next week. They have an open door event. And I hope they are to learn more about what they are doing in terms of sustainability and innovation. I would add also that my last job was with a clean energy company. We worked on manufacturing fuel cells. I also have a good understanding of how city commissions functions, having been having served for two terms on the Human Relations Commission, including as vice chair and chair. And a long time ago, I was on the Board of Directors of Cable Co-op, which you might remember was bringing cable TV service to Palo Alto. And that functions function a bit like a utility. Now, some of the issues that I'm interested in are grid reliability. I think that we have too many power outages in Palo Alto. And that we should seek ways to remedy that situation. I'll give you an example. Just two weeks ago, on March 10, 3,500 households lost power. And by the way, we lost power just after we have reset all our clocks after the change due to daylight saving time. So we had to do it again. You know, the cause for that was, you know, a car run into a power pole. You know, it's a freak event. Stuff happens, you know. But the real question is, why was it so many people that were affected? Why was it 3,500 households? And why was it also spread on such a large geographic area? When you look at the map, you know, many neighborhoods were affected by this power outage. And I I think that it seems to me that this power outage should have happened, of course, because of the event that triggered it. But it should not have been spread like that so wildly. I think something possibly can be done to to make sure that in the future, we can find power outages to much smaller area. Another area of of interest is, you know, I like to see what kind of tangible results we are getting from the deployment of our advanced metering infrastructure. You know, for instance, are we getting some savings in terms of electricity or water usage? You know, you would think that, you know, if people look at the data, maybe they can remedy some losses due to leaks or maybe wasting electricity that and noticing things that we were not aware of. So I think we, that's an area that I like to dig into to see if we are getting a return on our investment. Or if we need to do more campaigns so that people look really at this data on a frequent basis. And then I would also mention grid modernization. You know, it's clear that we will need a lot more electricity, you know, with more electric cars and also more electric appliances and also the increase in population that we can expect due to the new housing that we are building in town. So grid modernization will be clearly a critical issue for I would say, the midterm and the long term for Palo Alto. And I'd like to be involved in that and use maybe some of my knowledge, skills, analytical, financial skills to to help there.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll turn to to the dais for questions of Mr. Ezra. Excuse me. Councilmember Burt.
Thank you. And thank you, Claude. I know you've been very active in a range of areas. And I know this is one of your real passions. Can you speak to any additional areas that you think that our Utilities Commission and our utility and city should be placing even greater emphasis on? I know you just touched on some.
Well, I think, you know, there are many areas, you know, conservation, I think waste management, you know, as well, you know, we certainly can increase the efforts there in terms of reducing all the waste, maybe with restaurants and companies. Maybe, you know, having some campaigns with them and and also addressing the issue, like, you know, if we reduce waste that's going to create a financial problem for the city, because people pay based on size of the cans that they use to throw their their garbage. So now this is also an issue that will maybe have to be fought about with some reserves or maybe something that could be unpopular. Now, you have to increase the rates to pay for 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 the fact that waste is shrinking. But I think, you know, conservation of electricity, of water, you know, we can certainly expect more periods of drought in California and being prepared for that will be very important. Having a greater grid resilience to maybe earthquake and other big events as well. I mentioned a small event, but there could be also big events. I mentioned a small event, but there could be also big events.
Councilmember Stone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and hi Claude. Good to see you again. Glad you were, you were applying. Curious your, your past experience on prior, prior commissions, like the Human Relations Commission. How does that, how is that going to help you be able to just hit the ground running on the, on the UAC?
So, you know, one thing I did when I was on the HRC and I think you were a witness of that is I tried to have a very collegiate atmosphere and tried to see, you know, who could succeed me as a Vice Chair or Chair. And helping them get there progressively. That's one thing I'm very proud of to, to have helped people come to leadership positions. And I know I'm proud also for all the good work we, we did, as I, as I said, very much as a team. We, we interviewed a lot of nonprofit organizations and produced a report for the city council that we discussed with the city. On the state of the nonprofits that we were funding in the city.
Okay, thank you. Oh, here's our one. Councilmember Rektal?
Thank you for applying. You've been very active in the city. We appreciate that. You mentioned Cable Co-op. I was a happy Cable Co-op customer until it ended badly. So your experience in Cable Co-op, how does that make you think about fiber to the home?
So, you know, Cable Co-op was a bit like a utility in many ways. You know, we had subscribers and we have to keep them happy. You know, we had to discuss the rates that we would provide to them and the type of service. And again, it was, it was not a commission, but it was a board, but it was functioning very much like a commission in many ways. No, we are not a for-profit company. And so I think the experience of working with colleagues, arriving to sometimes very big decisions. You know, we had to, you know, we had so much debt that ultimately, you know, we had to sell Cable Co-op to AT&amp;T. Because we couldn't, otherwise we would have been in bankrupt. So, you know, it was, as I said, a very momentous decision for us, but it was the right one.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for your application, for all your service to date in the city.
Okay, good. Thank you very much.
All right.
That concludes all the candidates.
Right, that concludes the candidates for this evening. And thanks to all of you here or who have left for stepping up, for doing the work to apply and, and serving, serving your city. We had one leftover item on the ARB. We discussed at the last meeting that after we had the interviews, we would decide if we wanted to extend the pool. So we could do that tonight, make that decision, or we could do it about a week from now, when we're scheduled to actually do the votes. So I would open the discussion for any comments on that.
And Mayor just wanted to note, I sent an email to the council regarding the ARB and wanted to highlight a point that the expiring members can actually stay on the board until a successor is appointed. So I think it appears that council may be under the impression that there'll be a vacancy. So we can definitely move forward with requesting that the expiring commissioners stay on.
Yeah, I think that was also mentioned last time. Yep. Which is obviously an easy default solution. So if anybody wants to argue a different point of view, that's fine. Councilmember Stone?
I'd move that we extend the expired commissioners' term until it's replaced and that we reopen the application pool for additional applicants. I'll second that.
Was that an and?
An and, yes.
Okay. Councilmember Rektal seconded. Hey, comment? Customer? Okay, customer Rektal?
No.
Councilmember Burt?
And I'm sorry, I had to step out of the room in case I missed this one part, but we have two incumbent commissioners.
For ARB and they will be with this motion asked to be stay, stay on.
My question was actually whether we would want to vote on those two positions and just then focus on the third position and extend the applications for the third position. That was my question.
And I think we reviewed some options and you might've just been out at that time, but I think that's why Councilmember Stone made that motion.
I mean, I, I wouldn't anticipate the two incumbents to have to, or any, any of them to have to reapply and go through the interview again. And I think voting on all of them at the, at the same time after the application pool, especially given that the two incumbents will stay on until that time is fine with me.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Commissioners, because there are two. Okay. Please take a vote.
Mayor Lowing?
Yes.
Councilmember Rektal?
Yes.
Councilmember Lou?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Vinker? Councilmember Burt?
Yes.
Councilmember Lethcott Haynes?
Yes.
Councilmember Stone?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero one. Councilmember Vinker absent.
We're running about 10 minutes behind, so I'm thinking we should maybe do a couple of things before we start public comment, just so that people aren't late. I can't tell from the visitors how many are out here, but we could at least do council member questions and comments and perhaps a consent item. I'm sorry. Yeah, we're ahead. That's right. Sorry. That's a very important correction to what I just said. Thank you. Does that work okay from your perspective, city manager? All right. So let's do council member comments and announcements, if there are any. And there aren't. So that's fine. So we could do consent and then go back to public comment if that's all right. So I'd like to have requests for approvals or no votes on any consent items. Councilmember Burt?
Like to remove item three from consent.
Okay. Councilmember Rektal?
Yeah, I would like to pull item three also.
Councilmember Lithcott Haynes?
I'd like to pull item three.
Okay, thank you. So that will be pulled. Any other comments? With that item pulled, we may or may not get to that tonight, depending on how long the other item goes. So we, we still have time to do it if we're concise, but we don't know that yet. So let's go ahead with the consent. I need a vote for. Oh, sorry. Any public comment on the consent items?
Just to clarify, given that we are pulling item three, are we still taking public comment on item three on the consent? Or is that being moved when the item is heard?
I think we can take it. Yep.
Mr. Mayor, you can take that public comment at either point. It's the chair's discretion.
I'm sorry?
That you do need to take public comment on number three and it's your discretion whether to take it now or later.
Yeah, we might as well take it now.
Our first speaker is Maura O.
Good evening, Mayor, council members and staff. I'd like to address consent item number three, the Nonprofit Partnership Work Plan. I want to begin by first recognizing the dedication of Reverend Coloma Smith, who recently completed eight years of service on the Palo Alto Human Relations Commission. His leadership on the commission has guided our city through hard and authentic conversations and actions to address issues of justice and belonging. I am grateful, grateful for his selfless hours of service to our city and express my deep gratitude and admiration for his leadership. His advocacy to support nonprofits serving critical needs in our community has been unwavering. Under his leadership, the funds that nonprofits receive through HISRAP has increased and our collaborative and impactful work has expanded. With Reverend Coloma Smith's legacy on the HRC guiding us, my request for the Nonprofit Partnership Work Plan is to explore processes that stem from a trust-based philanthropy model. Seeing nonprofits as partners and collaborators every step of the way, including in tracking fund usage, measuring outcomes and ensuring alignment with community priorities. This work plan can offer a precedence for an inclusive way to partner with nonprofits, illustrated by the sensitivity and sense of partnership that Reverend Coloma Smith exemplified. For example, the recommendation currently restricts funding requests to 501(c)(3) nonprofit organizations that exclusively serve Palo Alto residents. I encourage you to invite nonprofit organizations based in Palo Alto to apply for funding, understanding their service model to residents and non-residents needing these vital services. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Charlie W.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members and Staff. On behalf of the Palo Alto Chamber of Commerce and in support of our nonprofit chamber members, I would like to address consent item number three, the Nonprofit Partnership Work Plan. We appreciate the opportunity to engage in recent stakeholder meetings concerning the work plan and its phased approach. And we want to extend, extend a special thanks to Lupita Alamos for her efforts in reaching out to our nonprofit community to share the work plan and gather valuable feedback. Our nonprofit partners are essential in delivering crucial community services that are mutually beneficial. Overall, there has been a favorable response to the proposed plan, which focuses on eligibility and criteria by defining the qualifications necessary for the funding eligibility. The application and evaluation process to establish clear and straightforward process for submitting and reviewing the funding requests and monitoring and reporting, outlining the requirements for tracking, measuring, and ensuring that there's an alignment with community priorities. We would like, we like that the work plan is designed to strengthen partnerships with nonprofits, promoting fairness and inclusion and providing the necessary flexibility and adaptation. And we appreciate the continued engagement with staff and their willingness to update the financial documents required to just allow agencies to submit their IRS, IRS Form 990 for all funding levels. And we commend staff and council for their ongoing efforts to support the nonprofits in Palo Alto that are prior, that are prioritizing essential community needs. One area of concern, and we encourage you to consider, is to allow nonprofit organizations based in Palo Alto to apply for this funding and not be restricted to serving Palo Alto residents only. The chamber appreciates staff's outreach and efforts in developing this work plan, and we hope you'll consider our change, our request for change. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Evelyn K.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members and good evening, staff. I would like to address consent number three, the Nonprofit, Nonprofit Partnership Work Plan. First, I'd like to join my colleague, Amora O, in thanking Reverend Coloma Smith for his recent completion of eight years on the service of the city as one of our very highly regarded members of the Human Relation Commission. And I also like to address the fact that we're very grateful for the staff and the work that has been done so far to include the voices of the grassroots and lay out the plan for the nonprofit to better understand it. But I would like to agree with my colleagues who have spoken before that this new plan needs to take into consideration the fact that nonprofits were serving our communities or capable folks and they're capable of tracking the numbers and how the money is spent. And so we need to look at the needs of the community, especially for those who are residing in RVs and those who are transient. With the new repavement of the Camino Real and the displacement, families are moving around this area. And we cannot have funding to serve our families whose children are in the Palo Alto School District and restricted to a specific area where the folks are residing. And so we're very grateful for our voices being included and we hope that these, these new suggestions will be taken into considerations and that we can all work together to serve our community, not just for those who are here, but those who may find themselves maybe in East Palo Alto for a short period of time, while hoping to come back to Palo Alto. Thank you.
And that concludes public comment on consent calendar items two through 11.
Thank you. All right, we, we return to the full consent item, so we'll need a motion to accept it as essentially as amended.
I saw move.
Second? Rektal and Burt? And that's as amended, you mean item threes?
Yes.
The three removed, correct.
Councilmember Rektal?
Yes.
Councilmember Lithcott Haynes?
Yes.
Councilmember Stone?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Vinker? Councilmember Lou?
Yes.
Mayor Lowing?
Yes.
Councilmember Burt? Motion carries six zero one. Councilmember Vinker absent for the vote.
Okay, that concludes the consent item, so let's revert back to public comment on items that are not on the agenda. We get a list of speakers, please.
We currently have 10 requests to speak and that includes one group of six.
Okay, so eight of the 10. I'm sorry, did you say six of the 10?
Correct. Six of the 10 are a part of a group.
Okay, so they can get eight minutes.
So individuals?
Pardon?
Individuals?
Then individuals get three.
Three minutes? Okay.
We're always happy to have them shorter if you can get to the point sooner, but you're welcome.
Our first speaker is Riley A.
Good evening, City Council, and thank you for having me here today. My name is Riley Adler and I'm a senior at Saratoga High School in Saratoga, California. And last year I spent four months creating, directing and filming a documentary on the impacts of light pollution on humans, the environment and overall the planet. And this documentary I chose because it was an environmental concern that I had that seemed kind of often overlooked or misunderstood. And I think that a lot of people are unaware of the devastating effects that it can have on communities that aren't aware of it. My documentary went on to win a high, the high school award, award out of 400 submissions at the One Earth Young Filmmakers Contest and has been showcased at events in the Bay Area, Illinois, Arizona, Arizona and Australia. And I wanted to share it with you guys today because I'm excited that the Palo Alto, Palo Alto City Council is close to the adoption of the Dark Sky Ordinance. And I hope it'll, the ordinance will be strong and can serve as a model for other cities in the Bay Area to protect the dark skies. Thank you, and I hope you enjoy this documentary highlighting just how crucial mitigating light pollution is.
Our next speaker is Rami F.
Good evening, Council and Mayor Lowing. My name is Ronnie Fisher, and I am the Chair of the Environmental Advocacy Committee for the Santa Clara Valley Bird Alliance. Madam Clerk, please show this documentary.
Thank you.
In North America, nights are becoming ten percent lighter each year, hundreds of times brighter than they were a hundred years ago, having grim implications for the health of both humans and wildlife. To unpack the consequences of a bright night sky, we interviewed Jane Mio, a freelance environmentalist on light pollution.
Light pollution is the robbery of the dark sky. It has eliminated a beauty that has been always for all of us accessible. And it now has become a story of the past.
Light pollution, the excessive artificial lighting produced by humans that disrupts the natural darkness of nature, was initiated by the invention of the light bulb around the Second Industrial Revolution. The cost of artificial lighting rapidly declined, and lights became increasingly commonplace. Despite the widely accepted assumption that lights guarantee protection among cities, this misunderstood environmental matter amplifies the degradation of human health and presents significant dangers to natural ecosystems and organisms. In order to understand this complicated topic's impact on human health, we reached out to Stephen Lockley, an associate professor at Harvard in the Division of Sleep Medicine.
We have a clock in the brain which generates twenty-four hour rhythms, and this clock sends signals out to the brain and the body to control sleep, your hormones, your metabolism, your genetics, controls all the things that you know have a twenty-four hour pattern. So light pollution would be light at night that is confusing the clock because lights occur at the wrong time, and that shifts rhythms and gets you out of sync with the real world. One of the first short-term effects of light at night is an impact on sleep, and that has consequences on learning and attention and mood. Over time, people who don't sleep enough have a higher risk of heart disease, of diabetes, and importantly, depression and anxiety. The impact of light at night and device use on sleep is one of the reasons we think that there's an increase in mental health issues among teenagers.
Light pollution harms a wide variety of wildlife by disrupting navigation, predation, sleep cycles, foraging instincts, reproduction, and other habits that species rely on for their survival. To expand on this, we interviewed Andy Kreis, the Vice President of Dark Sky International Santa Cruz Chapter, a worldwide organization leading the fight for darker skies.
Birds migrate at night. They use the stars, the movement of the stars over the course of the night to find their way. They'll use the moonlight. Some of them might even be tuned in to the Earth's magnetic field. A lot of the stuff we don't even understand, right? Nine eleven was this great tragedy where a lot of people lost their lives. And so we want to pay tribute to these people who lost their lives unnecessarily. So what do we do? We shine these bright, bright lights that mimic the footprints of the Twin Towers in New York City. That's right around the peak of the fall migration season when birds are trying to fly south. This disrupts their ability because this will exhaust these birds, and they won't make it to where they go. So it's the ultimate irony to me. We're trying to pay tribute to people who lost their lives by killing another species, literally, literally killing another species.
So far, only nineteen U.S. states have put in real legislation regarding light pollution, but individuals have the power to regulate their own impact.
First of all, think about your own light environment. What lights do you have in the bedroom? How often are you using your phone in the bedroom? How dim is the light? How red-orange looking is the light? What exterior lighting do you have on your house? Is that light pointing to the sky and polluting the sky so we can't see the stars? Or is it shining onto plants that then are going to grow at the wrong time of year? And so you can think about, do I really need this light on? Does it really need to be that bright? And am I pointing the light in the right direction if I'm thinking about external lighting?
If enough people support and actively participate in the fight against light pollution, we can work to secure a darker planet and a brighter future.
Our next speaker is Maura O.
Good evening, Mayor, council members and staff. My name is Maura Omen. I'm a resident of Palo Alto. I want to thank Vice Mayor Vicki Vinker and City Council Member Julie Lithgow-Hames for participating and co-hosting the event honoring the life and legacy of Palo Alto City Manager June Fleming, who served this city from nineteen ninety-two to two thousand as City Manager. This event took place on March twentieth at the Mid Peninsular Media Center. The event was truly a community effort with many individuals donating their time and resources to honor June Fleming. Thank you to city staff, elected officials, and community members who attended the event. We began with hearing reflections from Honorable Rose Jacob Gibson, who was City Council Member of East Palo Alto and also San Mateo County Board of Supervisor on the Board of Supervisors. Gloria Young also came and shared her reflections, and she was Palo Alto City Clerk during June's tenure. And Loretta Green, who was a veteran journalist, also shared her memories. We were then treated to an inspiring and educational evening that included memories and historical context from three women mayors from nineteen ninety-three, Sharifa Wilson, Mayor of East Palo Alto, Gail Slocum, Mayor of Menlo Park, and Jean McCown, Mayor of Palo Alto. We enjoyed exceptional food generously donated by Palo Alto Restaurants, Ada's Cafe, Cooper Cafe, and Taroon. Mid Penn crew and musical talent all donated their time to capture the event that will be available for all to enjoy in the near future. Thank you to June Fleming for her years of service dedicated to Palo Alto and her leadership, her friendship, and her creativity that set the foundation for many significant and lasting initiatives. We will be sending her family a collection of notes and photographs to express our deep condolences to them on behalf of our community. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Marcy R.
Good evening. My name is Marcy Rodriguez, and I represent the owners of three one four Litton Avenue. As longtime renters and now very proud owners, we would like to bring to your attention a persistent and increasingly concerning issue. Since August of two thousand twenty-three, we have repeatedly contacted Green Waste, the City of Palo Alto, and Palo Alto Police Department regarding the homeless encampment in the shared garbage enclosure at three one four Litton Avenue. This enclosure is shared with four forty-five Bryant, which in June will be a new community center, and four twenty Florence. Unfortunately, despite our ongoing efforts, the situation remains unresolved. For two years, we have struggled with this problem, receiving minimal support from the city. We have installed security cameras on our buildings as employee safety has become a growing concern. Many of our employees use the city's easement to pass through the garbage enclosure to access the public parking garage. Non-functional sensor lights in the city-owned parking garage has left this area poorly lit, creating a dark and unsafe space where homeless individuals frequently reside and defecate. Shown in the attached pictures that I will leave, human feces is often present on the city side of the easement, which our maintenance crew cleans weekly. Defecating on public property is a violation of Palo Alto Code Section one point one two point zero one zero. However, our repeated complaints have gone largely unaddressed. We are urging the city to take immediate action to maintain the cleanliness and safety of this public space. Our maintenance team is not equipped to handle biohazard waste, nor should they be responsible to do so. Our employees deserve to walk to and from work without fearing for their safety or encountering unsanitary conditions. We look forward to discussing this matter further and working with the city to come up with a practical solution for all. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jeffrey S.
Good evening. My public comment relates to the resolution adopted by council last week, reaffirming council's commitment to Palo Alto values and interests in the context of recent federal administrative actions. I'm specifically focused on Executive Order one four one seven three, which requires federal grantees to certify that they do not operate any illegal DEI programs. I would like to be sure that the city is evaluating whether this executive order has or could have any bearing on the timing and/or availability of federal highway bridge program funding for the Newell Road Bridge Replacement Project. My understanding is that highway bridge program funding is sponsored by the Federal Highway Administration and is administered by Caltrans. My surmise is that Caltrans, as a state agency distributing these federal funds, must comply with federal directives, including this executive order. Inasmuch as Caltrans had already programmed the highway bridge program funding for the Newell Road Bridge before this executive order was issued in January twenty twenty-five, I'm hoping that federal funding for the Newell Road Bridge Replacement Project will not be affected. Thank you.
And that concludes public comment on items not on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. City manager is up for your comments.
Well, actually, perhaps I'll just cover agenda changes, additions, and deletions. We have no city manager comments this evening. Just want to note, again, no changes since the amended agenda, but perhaps that's the issue, is that the amended agenda adds an action item AA one, potential support or sponsorship of Senate Bill four five seven Becker Regarding Housing Accountability Act reforms. And that is the only change to your agenda this evening.
Councilmember Lithgow Hames?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was going to comment in our council member questions, comments, and announcements, but didn't want to preempt the city manager as I did last week by saying something I thought you were going to announce. So since you didn't have your own segment, I just want to be sure everybody knows that the city is celebrating Supervisor Semidion on Sunday, this Sunday, at Lucy Stern from four to six. So everybody should come out for a wonderful opportunity to celebrate our beloved former elected official. Thank you.
Perhaps just for clarification, I should note that that event is actually at capacity. And so we do have, I believe, a waitlist that's attached to the Eventbrite in case members of the community have RSVP'd for the event but cannot make it. We're inviting them to cancel their RSVP so that others can be able to attend.
Okay, and your comments are complete? All right, so now it calls for a, the agenda calls for a council break. So we're going to take that for fifteen minutes. So you can rest up, Vice Mayor. And then double A one.
Okay, so that would be at eight forty, I believe. Is that correct, Mayor?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, so back on item AA1, which was added to our agenda tonight called AA1, which is potential support or sponsorship of a Senate Bill 457 from Senator Becker regarding Housing Accountability Act reforms. Start with staff, thank you. Yes, thank you, Mayor. Also, I did want to just do one administrative note on your item number three that was pulled from consent. We are prepared to discuss it this evening. I do want to share that the timeline for notifying nonprofits of the process that's recommended is very tight. So I just wanted to make you aware of that as you proceed with tonight's discussion. Let's see, okay, so back on item AA1, which was added to this evening's agenda. We don't have a PowerPoint presentation, but we do have our resources available. I just wanted to start off with a few comments on this item. First off, just to acknowledge the quick pace of this item appearing on your agenda and being brought forward for council discussion. I would share that my personal first contact with Senator Becker's office was the week before last. And it was literally just last week that we understood that the bill would be moving forward. So with that, the bill that we have for you to discuss this evening would modify rules related to builder's remedy development applications, specifically in two respects. First off, the current law allows a preliminary application, and these are terms of art, as sufficient for establishing a status of an application as a builder's remedy project. That this bill would require complete applications, again, a term of art, in order to qualify as a builder's remedy application. The second major modification proposed in the bill relates to the window in which applications can be submitted. The current window under state law for applications extends until HCD, the Housing Community Development Department of the State, certifies a city's housing element as compliant. The bill would change this deadline to the date at which the city council or local governing body approves a housing element that is subsequently certified as compliant by HCD. We have our legislative advocate, Townsend Public Affairs, represented by Carly Shelby, available remotely. We also have staff available. And with that, Mayor, I turn it back to you for your discussions and council questions.
Okay, so relative to timing, the idea is to discuss it tonight, see where we feel like we are. It may or may not be the consensus of the body that we can make a decision on tonight, in which case that we would need to continue this item. And the logical date to which continue, to which it would be continued would be March 31st, which is a week from tonight, unless we make other decisions. So the city manager is signaling me.
Yes, actually, Mayor, if I could, substantive information we received late this afternoon is that the deadline for our action, not so much a deadline, perhaps what was driving the time sensitivity, had been believed to be an April 1st Senate committee hearing date. We've since heard that that first committee hearing date would not occur until April 22nd, I believe, at the earliest. And so there is some additional time before the actual hearing, certainly depending on the council's discussion this evening. Knowing where the city's position is likely to head would be helpful as soon as we can get there.
Yeah, that's all news to me as of this moment. That's all news to me right now, that
Okay, my apologies, sent you a text this afternoon. So my apologies for perhaps not getting that communication clearly across. So again, April 22nd is likely the first, the earliest hearing date that we expect. And that said, your next scheduled council meeting is April 7th. as opposed to next Monday, which is March 31st.
Okay. So if we like, we could get any sort of report from Townsend on this, or we just have the process recapped by, I know Councilmember Burt has been involved in this, and the city manager's been involved with it. You now have text in front of you of the changes. So if we don't need any other speakers at this point, I think folks should just jump in and let us know what you're thinking about this proposal. No lights on yet. Councilmember Stone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have several questions probably for Townsend if it's time for questions, or I can hold off until later.
That's fine.
Okay. So a few questions, great. See Michelle B. on, thanks for being here. So just to be clear, this law, if passed, would apply retroactively to builder remedy applications that were submitted after April 15th for Palo Alto when we adopted the revised housing element?
This actually might be a question better answered by staff. We have Albert Yang on that perhaps could give a perspective on that.
Yes, so this bill would apply to existing pending builder's remedy applications with the exception that if a project is able to complete the entitlement process before January 1st, 2026, when this bill would presumably go into effect, then they would likely best the right to the builder's remedy by getting that entitlement.
Thank you. And do we know, I know the Townsend report listed several projects that are in the pipeline. So if this were passed, this would not impact the Molly Stones project, correct?
So, you know, it's a good practice when language is being potentially introduced to allow that process to play out without speculating what language ultimately will get adopted by the legislature, if any, and signed by the governor. Ultimately, if something is approved, then we'll do a case-by-case analysis and look at all of our projects and be able to advise at that point.
Okay. And I don't know, I know if staff is aware and might be the same response, but if this bill would have an impact on the Sunset Magazine project in Menlo Park?
So again, you know, I think it's very, very early in the process. The bill hasn't even been introduced. So I think it's a little bit early to be speculating on those kinds of issues, but I understand there's a lot of public interest and that people will be looking at these dates and lining that up and, you know, assessing that on a case-by-case basis as it goes forward.
Now, we do have some people from Menlo Park in the audience today. Maybe they have information as well on the kind of the timeline there.
They may wish to comment.
They might be able to comment on that. Don't want to get our hopes up on that. I mean, that's going to have, that would have a significant impact on Palo Alto, Menlo Park, and the entire region. So be curious to know more there. And then maybe for direct or lay, do we have any builder remedy projects that were submitted as preliminary applications prior to April 15th and then later completed as formal applications? Because the Townsend report only specified there were two preliminary applications submitted between April 15th and August 20th.
Well, thank you, Councilmember. I think as Ms. Stone noted, or Stumpf, I'm sorry, that, you know, this just happened a week ago, so we're still putting together our data on this. I just need to do a little bit more analysis on it before I could respond to that.
Okay, that's fair. Thank you. Those are my questions for now.
Councilmember Burt?
Yes, I'd just like to encourage us to just focus on the merits of the legislation as opposed to its impact on any projects within our community that we might be needing to rule on at some future time. So just want to make sure everybody's thinking to focus on just the legislative language.
We can choose to go to public comment at any time if we're done with the question round. Okay, so why don't we go to public comment then?
Mayor, we currently have eight requests to speak. Are we sticking with the three minutes? Our first speaker is Nadia N. Okay, good evening, council members. I just want to say I wrote my public comments before I saw the headline in the post, which just only supports what I'm about to tell you. I'm here tonight to express strong support for Senator Becker's SB 457, a vital piece of legislation that protects the integrity of our city's carefully crafted housing plans. Over the past several years, we've worked diligently as a city and as a community to develop a thoughtful and balanced housing element to accommodate more than 6,000 new units as required by the state. This was no small task. It involved careful urban planning, community engagement, and hard trade-offs. We didn't take the easy route. We looked holistically at our city's needs and came up with a comprehensive approach that includes major upzoning on San Antonio, El Camino, and soon Calav downtown in the Stanford Research Park. This represents one of the most significant shifts in Palo Alto's housing policies in decades, and crucially, we did it without relying on out-of-scale mega towers. Instead, we focused on smart growth, dense housing in transit-accessible areas, preserving neighborhood character while expanding affordability and access. Urbanist and architect Peter Calthorp, a preeminent voice of the new urbanism movement, who keynoted the State of the Valley Conference a few years ago, warned us about this very risk. He argued that out-of-context projects can derail the movement for more housing by alienating the public and triggering a wave of local resistance. Calthorp emphasized that context matters, that height, design, and location should all align with broader community planning if we want to build lasting support. SB 457 ensures those efforts aren't undermined by rogue builder's remedy projects that bypass our locally approved plans, ignore zoning, and more importantly, damage public trust. These speculative projects threaten to upend not just our housing element, but the credibility of the housing reform statewide. And that's the real danger here, a statewide backlash. If the cities that act in good faith get steamrolled anyway, support for pro-housing laws will erode. We could see a chilling effect on progress, not just in Palo Alto, but across the state. Take the proposed 80 Willow Road project in Menlo Park as a cautionary tale. It's outside their housing element plan, located near an ecologically sensitive San Francisco creek, and proposed by a Russian oligarch. It includes three towers, the tallest reaching 461 feet. That's nearly three times the height of 525 University or 101 Alma. This is not planning, it's opportunism, and it threatens to become the poster child for why the public should turn against the pro- sorry, it threatens to become the poster child for why the public should turn against pro-housing legislation. Palo Alto has shown that we can add meaningful housing without compromising scale, character, or environmental responsibility. SB 457 backs that approach. I urge you to support this bill and join other responsible cities in asking the state to reward and not punish thoughtful community-based planning. Thank you. Our next speaker is Michael Q.
Good evening, everyone. It's a little tough to know where to begin on this one. I'm a former Palo Alto resident. I moved to Sunnyvale a few years ago to be a little closer to work. This item to support SB 457 was added rather suddenly and under some little bit unusual circumstances. Public money was spent, and members of staff were given a directive to work with Senator Becker's office on the public dime with very little notification to the general public about the purpose and what was being done. I think more time is necessary because Senator Becker's constituents are not just in Palo Alto. They are much more geographically diverse, and this bill will impact the entire region. So I think tonight, a continuance, at least until the next meeting, will be appropriate. Further politically, the odds of this bill in Sacramento, I think our fairness there are not particularly good. Robert Rivas is now the Speaker of the House. Senator Wiener chairs the Budget Committee in a very tough fiscal year. And Senator Skinner now heads the Housing Committee. I mean, I understand you're looking for a bailout effectively for the failures to come anywhere close to the Rita numbers the community promised. But this will not be your salvation. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kevin K.
Hello. My name's Kevin Cranin, and I live in Menlo Park. So I'm one of the Menlo Parkers that might be able to answer a few of your questions. I'm also a constituent of Senator Becker from a different city, and I'm actually very much in favor of this bill for a couple of reasons. I am a housing advocate, as some of you might know, and I think that, number one, some of the outcomes from builder's remedy, like 80 Willow, have proved to be things that could really seriously topple our housing movement here in California. They're the poster children for fundraising, for referendums, to overturn all of those states' efforts and go back to local control. So I think I actually give Palo Alto credit for being very brave in actually kind of proposing a tuning of builder's remedy so that it helps get rid of some of the sorest thumbs in the entire state. And I think other cities that have similar sore thumbs will be very supportive of this bill. I also think that this will be something that's beneficial from just a general housing perspective, because as we know, not every builder's remedy project is housing positive. There are some out there, especially ones that were delivered late and thin. When I say late and thin, I mean they came in just under the wire as placeholders and have become things that really aren't going to offer opportunities for more housing, but more commercial and a worse ratio for here in Silicon Valley. So I offered one off of my support as a member of Menlo Park, and I actually chime in everything that Nadia said as well with respect to doing the right thing. So appreciate it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Faith B.
Good evening. My name is Faith Brigil. I'm in agreement with what Kevin said and also Nadia. I'm really pleased that you are looking at this bill, and I hope very much that you will support it. It's really important. Thanks a lot.
Our next speaker is Herbie.
Mayor Lalling and councilmembers, I urge you to continue this item to either the March 31st or April 7th meeting. The city manager has said that the earliest date that this would be before the committee, housing would be at their April 22 meeting. The last time for submitting amendments to a bill to the committee is noon on April 14th for the April 22nd meeting. Mayor Lalling said he now has copies of what the language is that's being proposed, and we've had a couple of speakers before me who said they're supporting this as if they've actually read the language, but it hasn't been generally available to the public. And by continuing this, you will have an opportunity for interested parties, for the public and the press, to see the language that's being proposed and to give their views on whether they support it or support it with changes. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jeff S.
Mayor vice mayor, city council members, my name is Jeff Schmidt. I'm a former Palo Alto resident, and I'm currently a city council member in District 3 in Menlo Park. I should say I'm speaking for myself tonight, maybe as a former Palo Alto resident, I'm speaking as. Just wanted to make you aware that the city attorney and city manager in Menlo Park are aware of the legislation. We're getting the text and will be looking at it pretty closely. I would want to encourage us to continue to work cross-city on analyzing this and discussing it and figuring out what makes sense for both cities. I can't speak on behalf of my other council members, but I know that this is having a pretty big impact in our city as well. So I would just encourage us to continue to work together, and that's why I'm here, just to show support and appreciation for Councilmember Burt reaching out earlier with some of the awareness on this. And that's it. Thanks.
Our next speaker is Scott O.
Hi, thank you. Yeah, I thought I had a pretty good idea of what my city was up to on housing, but, okay. Yeah. After listening to the exchanges between council and staff, I'm less clear on what the city is asking council to support than I thought I was when I sat down. I understand there is uncertainty in the legislative process, but I feel like there should be answerable questions about what it says today, and that isn't what I heard. It sounded like this is unknowable. So, you know, I was very engaged in the housing element process, and one thing I heard a lot from staff and others was that we didn't have time, like that, you know, like everyone was under the gun, and we needed to, you know, we didn't have spare cycles to be, you know, doing review. And clearly, this is taking staff time and is taking it during the most critical period of housing element implementation. Mid-cycle review is in two years, and we have some commitments, and they don't look like slam dunks to me, but nor does it look like we're behind. And I'm worried that something like this is going to suck up more time and perhaps put us behind the ball on that. Listening to some of the other commenters in support, I'm wondering if 80 Willow is what's motivating this bill? Why isn't Menlo sponsoring it? As far as I can tell, Molly Stones is our, I mean, I'm sure Molly Stones is our biggest builder's remedy project, and as far as I can tell, it's way more popular. I remember some anti-housing folks trying to organize it against our next door and got shouted down pretty decisively. And that wasn't me or anyone I know, like it had been going on for a day and someone, you know, pinged me, and it's like, oh, wow, like, that's kind of amazing. It really is kind of remarkable how much support a project like that has in Palo Alto right now. So, yeah, I really do wonder, what are we all doing here? Anyway, thank you.
Our next speaker is Peter D.
Good evening. This is Peter Dreckmeyer, Palo Alto resident. First of all, I want to thank you all for serving. We're very fortunate to have such an engaged and thoughtful council. I think I support this legislation. I need to learn more about it. But housing has been an issue in Palo Alto for a long time. When I ran for city council 20 years ago, our jobs housing imbalance was 2.7 to 1, and I believe now it's about 3.5 to 1. And so we probably needed some encouragement from the state to do more on housing. But we also have to remember that it's an issue of supply and demand. We don't have enough housing for our workforce, and we probably have too many jobs. We don't have enough housing for our workforce and we probably have too many jobs if we don't want to grow really big. And the problem with Builders Remedy sometimes is that it focuses so much on supply and not so much on demand. 80 Willow Road, 665 housing units, for housing advocates, that sounds great. But 3,000 jobs, four times as many jobs as housing units. People are going to be priced out of the area. There's not going to be enough housing. The housing crisis will get worse. And so, yeah, we needed some encouragement from the state, but we also need the nuances of the community and looking at what's best for our region. And I think Palo Alto has really made a good faith effort recently. I think we are going to be building housing. I think we're going to do it in a smart way. And I think this legislation is really important to regain some balance between what the state is encouraging and in a lot of cases, that's commendable, and what our community can do to address the issue locally. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Winter D.
Hey, I don't support the Molly Stone project. I am certainly not alone in that. It's overreach. What I want, you know, we have a planning department and the key word is planning. Because planning can note some sort of rational, thoughtful thinking about development issues that are proposed and put before us. And I really support that. I ask that Palo Alto may need a little longer to take a look at it, but I would hope in the end we will be a co-sponsor of Senator Becker's SB 457. As it's written, quote, "The intent of the bill is not to weaken existing housing laws, but to provide a rational and predictable framework that aligns compliance determinations with actual adoption dates, thus eliminating opportunities for speculative development, eliminating opportunities for special." I am all for that and I suspect that that's widely shared. This matter needs to be decided soon because we want to be ready for the first hearings on it. So I hope that you all will, I hope that we all will end up supporting this. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Liz G.
Yes. Hi. I am not in support of the city of Palo Alto supporting this Becker Bill SB 457. I just want to say this is more window dressing on the not in the character of our neighborhood. We really need to confront this private property versus what we desperately need, which is housing, housing, housing. And this being sort of added to this agenda and as sort of a surprise agenda item, there's been no public discussion, which is very necessary. I am surprised that the city of Palo Alto has been in discussions with Josh Becker without really any knowledge of many, many folks in this city who have been working very diligently for housing, for affordable housing, for low-income housing, for inclusive housing, for diverse housing, that this is coming in sort of sideways. So as an advocate of housing and especially in the affordability category, we have to lessen the roadblocks in the way to, these are just more denial delays and ignoring the reality. We can do local. We can do climate. We can do close to, you know, amenities and transit and infill and all these things. We can have all those wish lists, but making this an issue right now, especially Palo Alto being a leader and an innovator. You know, you can go back to Gerda Eisenberg in the 1940s, having done housing inclusive, really pushing against that redlining in the Lawrence Track. She was a pioneering woman in diversity, inclusion, housing, African-Americans, Japanese-Americans, Jewish refugees. So it does happen in this city and we can do it. We just have to make it happen. I would really encourage that the city look very closely at this SB, what is it, 457? Housing now. Thank you.
And that concludes public comment on Agenda Item AA1.
Okay. I'd like to make just an initial comment, which is unusual, but I just want to talk to the confusion that's already starting here from these public comments. This has nothing to do with any complaints about Rena. It has nothing to do with changing Rena. And we have a housing element that finally was adopted by the state and we have lots of programs and zoning in there to build it. And we've got the sites. We spent like four years doing that for the first time we walked neighborhoods to figure out where the sites were. So we're not trying to get out of building any housing or changing any quotas with the suggestions that are here. And the second point I want to make is that I've talked to a number of legislators in the last two years and they've said flat out to me, including in public sometimes, we made mistakes in getting this housing element going and how we processed it and the laws that are made and they specifically referenced this law that we're talking about. So this isn't some sort of, you know, surprise to the legislature and like Senator Becker is saying, you know, we should probably try to fix our mistake here because that would make sense for all of the cities. Because it's not Palo Alto leading the way and saying we're the only one that is concerned about this. So let's just focus on what's at hand here as we hear from the public and as we move forward on this discussion. And I just only second the math that Peter Dreckmeyer said is it's 4X job over housing. And we want to go the opposite direction on that one building that's mentioned in Willow. So that's a perfect example of a gargantuan building that doesn't get us anything that works in a city. And that's a mistake in my judgment. And so there's appeal to what's in this text in terms of where I think we need to go. And just lastly, I'd add that there's no expectation that Palo Alto is going to be the only one behind this. But we might be the first if we get going on it. So, thank you. Let's see. Councilmember Lithgow-Hames?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When it comes to our Builders Remedy projects here in Palo Alto, I believe there are 10. I may be slightly off. If you're following these closely, you know that while applicants are using the Builders Remedy to get their project in the door in Palo Alto, many, if not most of them, are working with the city to come up with a compromise we can all live with. So I don't think this bill is about Palo Alto in the main. This bill is about those Builders Remedy projects that I call flagrant fouls, such as 80 Willow Road in Menlo Park. The Becker Bill SB 457 is clearly in response to that, which begs the question, why would Palo Alto be the lead sponsor and not Menlo Park? We've got our colleague, Councilmember Schmidt here. Mr. Mayor, is it okay for me to ask him that question directly?
Go ahead.
Please come up if you would. It seems odd to me that we would be the lead sponsor on a bill that is really trying to draw attention to this flagrant foul, as I call it, 80 Willow. Can you give us a sense as to why we're scrambling right now instead of y'all?
It's a fair question. I think based on what I heard today, mostly you guys were more in tune with this coming down the line quicker than we were. We only meet every other week. I think you guys meet every week. So we're just a little bit behind the cycle. It wasn't an intent. It wasn't signaling anything. It was on our radar, but we're not due to meet for another, we're meeting tomorrow and then another two weeks. So we wouldn't have been able to agendize it by April 1st, but I think we'll probably end up having some discussions about how to follow Palo Alto's lead.
Thank you. I have one more question for you while we have you.
Yeah, of course.
Did you all give us notice that you were going to pass an ordinance banning RVs in Menlo Park from 11:00 PM to 5:00 AM?
When you say give you notice, I'm not sure what do you mean by that?
Well, I guess this is an ordinance that's going to impact, it's going to increase the number of RVs on our streets. And we're looking at trying to cooperate on a concept here about protecting Menlo Park from what's happening in 80 Willow. And I'm just finding it frustrating that we might be the lead on this bill and yet when we're looking at a different end of the housing spectrum, it looks like y'all have made a unilateral decision to push RVs to Atherton, East Palo Alto and Palo Alto. And I'm wondering whether there was an attempt to have a more regional conversation before that happened.
The honest answer is I don't know if there was an attempt to have a regional conversation. I'm one of the newest members to council and I know that's not an excuse, so I don't necessarily have all the history of the outreach that's been done. I can say personally, I was the one council member who voted to not pass the ordinance and with the hope that we could establish a program, but my research into doing that was it would have taken us a year, a year and a half. We just hadn't done, in my opinion, we just hadn't done the work to establish a program and we didn't get the votes when the votes came up. So to your question about whether we had done outreach to other cities, I just don't know. But I'm hoping that we could potentially rectify that in the future. So fair question.
Thank you, Councilmember Schmidt. I appreciate it. That's it for you. I appreciate it.
Thanks.
Before we get to the merits, which are significant, I think, I think this bill has significant merits. I think we have to discuss procedure. Late notice, this was added to the agenda four days before the meeting, instead of our usual 11 days. It's a policy item that didn't go to PNS first. Staff said they're just putting together data on this, only got the news last week. The mayor didn't have some of the latest info until just now up here on the dais. And if those on the inside of this prospective bill haven't yet or only recently have gotten the information they need, how do we think the public has had adequate notice on this? We've had a handful of people come tonight. This is a massive question and there are bound to be heartfelt, well-informed opinions on both sides or multiple sides of this issue. And the sheer lack of number of humans here tonight on this issue tells you it's not an issue that doesn't matter. It's an issue for which there was not adequate notice. So I'm concerned about that. We also did not have the draft bill in front of us until after 2:00 PM today as council members. Not sure why we're okay with that when we're being asked to be the lead sponsor on a bill that we learned about at the 11th hour. My next question is what does lead sponsorship entail? Was this Senator Becker's idea and he was looking for a sponsor? Or did we, and we raised our hands, or was this our idea and Senator Becker's only putting it forward if we agree to sponsor it? And I'd like to know when was the last time the city was the lead sponsor of a bill? Those are sort of three questions related to being a lead sponsor, please.
Sure. If I might lead off and then I'll ask Ms. Shelby to amplify or correct as necessary. In terms of the question of how this goes forward, it's my understanding that it's essentially two categories. Category one would be if the legislator themselves had initiated the idea and was advancing a proposal that became a bill. Category two is where there is a sponsor paired with the author, who is the legislator that carries the bill. In this case, it is the latter. The idea of this bill was one that came up through discussions, really between a council member and the legislator. And staff involvement was quite frankly limited to the one-hour rule. And so we did not do any substantive work on it really until it became clear that this could move forward. And that's the point at which we have pulled it together and put it on your agenda. Let's see. Ms. Shelby, perhaps this is where you might want to correct if I've misstated anything.
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor, members of the State Council, Carly Shelby, Towns and Public Affairs. I will say you did a great job of kind of wrapping that picture up for the council. What I will note is that the legislative process moves extremely fast. Part of the discrepancies with the language and some of the back and forth really had to deal with the legislative process, which involves communication with legislative council to vet language to ensure that it is implementable. And so we have been working to fine-tune some of the language, which kind of has contributed to its delay. We anticipate that the language will cross the desk probably tomorrow or sometime this week. But I will note that this is not atypical by any means within the legislative process. Members this year have had their total bills that they are allowed to introduce over the two-year session period reduced from 40 to 50 bills down to 35 bills. So this is one very precious vehicle that Senator Becker has within his portfolio. And he is prioritizing this because he understands that this is very important to the city, to multiple cities possibly within his district. And so he has made one of his bill vehicles available for this measure. And there's been some back and forth in terms of the timing with the committee scheduling. However, that is typical too. I mean, this is just part of the legislative process and I totally understand that it feels very last minute. But, you know, given that there are over 2,000 measures introduced throughout each legislative session, it's very typical for things to kind of move and change very abruptly, I will say.
I don't think I've had an answer to my question of when we were last sponsored, but I'm well over my time.
Well, I can answer that. To my understanding, we have not sponsored a bill in staff's collective memory. I will tell you personally, the last time I was involved was 30 years ago in sponsoring a bill. So it is not a regular occurrence for us.
Thank you. I have one more question, but I'm well over, so I'll wait.
Okay. Let's see. Councilmember Burt? I think it was Lou.
Thank you. So I was glad to hear the update from the city manager that the first hearing of the Senate Committee on this is not until April 22nd. My understanding is that Senator Becker's request that we respond this quickly was based upon the anticipation that it would be April 1st. And so I think that that allows us to postpone an action and make sure that we have the public and the council that fully understands the ramifications. I just read the legislation today as well and spent the afternoon trying to make sure I understood it correctly. So I certainly understand colleagues in a similar boat. And my understanding was Senator Becker who asked us to be a sponsor. We didn't ask to be a sponsor. And then I did want to just lend my concurrence to some of the comments that have been made. You know, our housing element was very deliberate. It's a very significant upzoning of housing in a series of key areas with additional ones on the rising of our two downtowns on top of the El Camino Corridor and the San Antonio Corridor. And as, for those of you who aren't familiar with Peter Calthorpe, he is really probably one of the key founders of the new urbanist movement. And he has been a leading advocate of densification and housing densification. And in our region, an advocate of putting it in those transportation corridors like we have done. And it was very interesting, a few years ago at the State of the Valley Conference where he surprised a lot of housing advocates to say, we don't need to park towers in the middle of low-density neighborhoods. We spread this out. We have, in our community, as we've all seen, we have a huge number of ADU units, either one or two per property are allowed. And then upzoning of our RM districts. And then upzoning of our RM districts and now adding housing in high density and what was primarily commercial areas in those corridors. All those things on top of that, our affordable housing is something that is a great challenge based on the Rina allocations. But we have, as I think you all know, we are second highest proportion of a deed restricted affordable housing of any city in Santa Clara County. I've personally been involved for 30 years with pushing those projects. We right now have three that look like they will come online this year, six more in the pipeline. I led the charge with, within the council to have the business tax, a third of that dedicated to additional affordable housing funding. Councilmember Rechtal led the campaign on that. We are affordable housing advocates and, and who put our, our effort where our words are. And I think we all should be not only proud of those efforts, but also just cognizant of the, the strong work that we have to do in the next few years to meet our Rina allocations. We don't need 40-story towers to do so. And I'm very grateful to Senator Becker for coming forward with a proposal to address, as Councilmember Lithgow Hames described it, flagrant fouls.
Councilmember Lou?
Thank you. I am, I share some concerns about the process. I share the overall sentiment that Eddie Willow Road, for example, is a flagrant foul. But I just wanted to ask some questions to really ground my understanding and hopefully the public's understanding of what's happening. So very briefly, could you recap the current state of builder's remedy? I know that there are some restrictions so that I think at most it's like, you can put 35 dwelling units per acre more than the current baseline zoning, or there's something along those lines such that builder's remedy would make projects like Molly Stone's and Sunset in the future impossible, right?
That's right. There's, there are some guidelines on, you know, maximum density, maximum size under the builder's remedy, but those only apply prospectively for projects that came in before January of this year. They can opt into those provisions if they want to. They can pick and choose which provisions they want to take advantage of. They're not required to comply with them.
Okay. And I also echo one of the public commenters where we should just try to answer what's currently happening in the language. And what I saw in the language was actually there were some references to January 1st, 2025 and how projects could optionally kind of go forward with the process described in this bill, or they could stick with their original builder's remedy processes. Is that right?
So in terms of the proposed change to the builder's remedy, there is a, there's a proposed change in the standard. And then the reference to a specific date, January 1st, 2026, was an exception to the proposed change. So the proposed change is to redefine deemed complete to mean a complete formal application, which was traditionally what it's been, rather than a preliminary application, which it was, you know, changed to in, in recent years. But we're, the, the reference to January 1st, 2026 is an exception to the new, the new date. Sorry, the new application requirement.
So 2026 is referenced, but there's also another set of references is 2025. And so how those 2025 and 2026 states interact, you know, what the kind of table of all the options are, I think, would be useful. Just for Palo Alto and then also hopefully if we can generalize, what does it mean to be a completed application? We have in Palo Alto, for example, the planning review application phase, we have the ARB review phase and the actual building permit phase. Can you talk more about what it would look like to be complete in Palo Alto? And if that's reflective of general practice across the state?
Actually, I think Director Lee is best to respond to that question. John, are you able?
Absolutely. So deemed complete of a form, so we use a formal application. And our, our processes are very similar to other jurisdictions, you know, in the area. We look for some basic, you know, information. Is the application filled out completely? Did the property owner sign it? Did we get plans that have enough detail for us to evaluate it to projects? So that's what we're, that's what I think is being referred to in the state language about a formal application being deemed complete.
In fact, Director, we have a checklist, do we not? Again, it's similar to what other agencies use.
Yes, we do. And that's online.
Okay. I just wonder if there are kind of loopholes or issues here where people can submit plans, but the plans are just not very detailed. And then it would still be deemed complete because the plans are technically there, but then they need to revise and make some tweaks. I feel like that is normal process, but we wouldn't necessarily say the project is not complete, even if it needed substantial revision, right?
So, yeah, I think, you know, if, if, it depends on what's missing. And we're, you know, we identify the types of information that we would like to see on a plan set so that we can do an analysis for the code. But say, for instance, somebody doesn't throw an orth arrow on there, or it's not scaled, or they're, they're missing something and we're not going to deem a project incomplete for something like that. But if we don't have floor area or dimensioned plan sets, right? That, that's something that you kind of need to be able to assess for code compliance.
Okay. Now, just to, like my understanding, the essential thrust of what would happen in an actual housing amendment process is that any attempts to submit builder's remedy would probably come in before the first local certification. And so cities would generally know what they are facing in terms of builder's remedy interest before they actually adopt their housing element. So then they can make adjustments if so, if they want to. So they can make their housing element more aggressive to reduce the risk that these builders or these projects happen or things like that. Like, is that one of the kind of key points for the city? And I have another question about another key point.
Councilmember, assuming that you're referring to what might happen if this bill passes, is that correct? I, I think that is a valid observation that by having complete applications prior to the final adoption, that, that would provide additional information for the city at the time of adoption.
Okay. And also the timelines would be compressed so that a developer wouldn't necessarily have time to scout out a new site and make agreements with the property owners and hire an architect and, you know, build detailed plans, which can take months. So really, projects that are already in flight, maybe they can bump up their scale or make changes, but it would be difficult for ambitious new projects to actually, you know, get off the ground at all. Are there any other kind of main observations or effects for the city or developers that I'm not capturing there? Like between those two points?
Well, let's see. First off, I don't know that we're in a position to opine on the ability or inability of private property owners or speculators to operate in the timeline. It is accurate, I think, to say that with this change, that there would be more work they would need to do before being able to file that builder's remedy application. I think as, as was noted in the Townsend memo, the other issue from a city perspective would simply be to acknowledge how impactful the buildings, builder's remedy applications can be when they are not consistent with our comprehensive plan. And so this bill would, by perhaps tightening the windows, provide a better means to which we could assess that level of impact created by any application.
Thank you. I'm over time, but I just want to lay out all the context. Thanks.
Councilmember Rechtal?
Thank you. This is a tricky one. There are some very well-intentioned efforts in here to rein in these fouls from happening. And there are some, you know, heartfelt concerns in the community about, are we going to get it right? Would we do that? Should we do it? And the devil's going to be in the details, I think, in the language. And I haven't had the chance to look at the language that came in this afternoon. So I did have a couple of questions, one of which Councilmember Lou just explored. So I don't think I need to revisit that. But the other is, so with respect to the date, looking at, instead of, for the cities having a compliant housing element, instead of that being the date of certification, that being the date that we passed one that is later certified. When is a tweak not a tweak? Because there's lots of just, you know, things are ministerial changes. I mean, I, I don't know if the, does the language address, are there zero changes? Are there some but not substantive or not material? Is there anything addressing how we, you know, what, what that means to have the same?
Yeah. So as it's currently proposed, we wouldn't be looking at, you know, were there tweaks and what was the extent of the tweak? The, the only relevant date would be, the only relevant factor would be what was the date that the governing body acted? And so in, in our case, it would be, would be April 15th, 2024. And whether the governing body authorized staff to make tweaks or not, that's the date that, that counts.
So is it, so it's the last time council acted, not whether the ultimately certified element is the same word for word? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Molly, not. Okay. Thank you. That's, that's helpful. Yeah. And so I, I think that, wait, I have another note here. Oh, Mr. Mayor, do you mind if I ask Councilmember Schmidt a question if Councilmember Schmidt's willing?
Aren't you glad you came tonight?
It's, it's quick and gentle. I'm just curious, because you were talking about the, the, the tight timeframe and not being able to get this agendized before April 1st. But now that it's April 22nd, is that something that you expect would be, could be done before that date? Or I mean, it's hard to put you on the spot, but do you think the process, the conversation is in process to explore that, I should say?
I would say it's possible. April 1st wouldn't have been possible because our meeting is tomorrow and there was no way to get it on. And then by April 1st. So I, I think, yeah, it's, it's a real possibility. I unfortunately wouldn't be the one to decide that because I probably would favor getting on. But yeah, I think that gives us time to deliberate and decide whether that would be something we should take up.
Okay. Because I, I generally, thank you. That's all I wanted to ask. You know, generally I'm concerned as well about just the, the process that we were, you know, in because of this April 1st date. And as former Mayor Dreck Meyer said, you know, yes, we may need some encouragement from the state to, to, to do the, the housing we, we want. And a lot of people see the builder's remedy as that. We're doing well. I think that we're getting a much better reputation in Sacramento, and I'd like to keep that. And I think part of the way to keep that is to see if other cities would come along. And we haven't even had a chance, as far as I know, to formally ask any or have them formally consider it. But if we put this out, we can do a variety of things. We can hear, well, I would, I would encourage us to take public comment again if we could, because this was such short notice. And I think there might be a lot more robust of a conversation. Also, once we get the language out there for people to, to see what it is, I'd like to see a robust conversation. I'd like to see us explore with other cities what they think or not. And I'd also like for us to think about the process of how something like this comes to us. And we don't have time tonight to get deeply into it at all. But this really is outside of our current legislative guidelines and processes. Because I, you know, I, I, and, and we should create a mechanism for when we need to move quickly, just like we, we worked on for the lawsuits. And, and what I can do is tell you, I could send it to the clerk to put it up, but we can talk. I would suggest we talk about it more fully later. So the guidelines say that they work in conjunction with the city council-approved advocacy process manual and the city council action to do, quote, strategic weighing in on issues of interest, which happened in 2021, before some of us came on council, but we've looked at that before. And the strategic weighing in was one of three options in 2021 that the city considered in terms of how one should advocate. So you have the substantive legislative guidelines, then you have the process. And the prospect, there was one option was widespread weighing in, and even that contemplated pending bills. Another was advocate on a limited number of issues, which was sort of categorically, we would talk about X, Y, and Z. The third was strategic weighing in on issues of interest to the city, and that's what was chosen. And that was where it says the city would thoughtfully comment on a handful of bills to ensure that Palo Alto had presence in Sacramento. And this to me feels like it's getting initiated. We're asked to sponsor, which is far more than weighing in. And so maybe we do want to sponsor and not just support. But if that's in conversation, I think that's a much bigger deal. We haven't done it for decades. I assume if you did it 30 years ago, it wasn't at Palo Alto because you weren't here. So I don't know when Palo Alto did it. It's a much bigger, high-profile deal in Sacramento. And, you know, there are, there are groups that do this all the time, like Cal Cities does this all the time. They have their list of bills that they want us to write letters about, not necessarily co-sponsor. And I just think that we should, as part of this, take the advantage of when an opportunity comes along, have a thoughtful process for how we do things that are more than just support, oppose, blah, blah, blah. So I, I think that this is all something that we should talk more about. I think, you know, none of us want to see the flagrant fouls. But we also want to make sure that we have given the public the opportunity to tell us the, all the concerns they might have. And I'm just afraid that with the limited notice, we haven't had that. So I would support a motion to, to actually agendize this, to continue this, I guess, is the, the thing, to April 14th, because that would come, that would be the council meeting eight days ahead of the next hearing. And after the PNS session, when Townsend is agendized to come give us the entire legislative overview, what's going on in Sacramento, including other housing bills. And, and it would be closer in time to that hearing. So we can see what's going on in Sacramento with the budget and other things. So I, I think that would be the prudent thing to do, and it would also make Mr. Barak happy.
Is there a second for that motion?
Okay, not, it would not make me mad. I did not mean that. You did not. I did not mean to infer that, sir.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay.
I just meant the delay. Pardon me.
Yeah. So now we can discuss it. Obviously, the massive material change is that there's not a committee meeting on April 1st. So I think Councilmember Rechtal has a hand.
Yeah. I'm not sure why we would not do it on the 7th. I, I'm just worried about Sacramento moves fast. And I'm afraid that, as mentioned, Herb mentioned, that there's a deadline for amendments. And if we see something that's wrong, if it's past that deadline for the amendment, now we're going to stop with what we have.
Could you maybe articulate your argument for why we couldn't do that on the 7th? Maybe even with a supplemental memo on this item from Townsend?
Well, first I'd like to know, is, does the amendment deadline fall between the 7th and the 14th? Is that what you're saying? If so, I'm, would be interested in that.
I'm not sure we have additional information, but Ms. Shelby, if you do, please share.
Yeah. So the, the amendment deadline is one thing. The, the real deadline that we're up against in terms of being incorporated within the committee analyses and also drawing in additional stakeholders to weigh in and support of this measure is that most letters of support in order to be reflected on the record and then presented to legislators is that most letters of support in order to be reflected on the record and then presented to legislators at the hearing are due approximately one week before the hearing. So in order for us to even be incorporated into the committee's analysis and to draw on additional stakeholders, I would recommend that this be solidified as early as possible, just so that we could get moving on it versus potentially not having our letter in, you know, a week before the hearing. But that's just my recommendation. We can make anything work. But they do appreciate letters to be sent in at least a week prior to the committee hearing.
What's that date? So we have the specific to work with.
That would be the 15th of April.
Is it the weekend? The hearing's April 22nd, correct?
Well, again, Ms. Shelby, please correct if I misstate. But my understanding is the this is our opportunity to try to speak Sacramento, which is a real challenge. There's a question of whether it's double referred to two committees. The housing committee date that we understood this would be heard at is actually April 29th. But there is also potential for a local government committee to hear it on the 22nd. So just to be clear, and again, there's some uncertainty as to whether there's a double refer or it would only go to housing.
But the earlier is April 22nd, and the second one is April 29th.
Correct.
Okay.
Latest information we have, which is different from the information we had this morning.
All right, and a week ahead is the 15th, and I was suggesting the 14th.
Okay. So, Mayor, I'll give you my comments on the merits of this. This just seems the right thing to do. It always seems strange to me that we would submit something that was substantially compliant on April 15th. It sits on HCD's desk for four months. And during that whole time, we are susceptible. Then after four months, they say, yeah, that was good. That they should turn the clock back to when we actually did complete our homework and turn it in. So I don't understand why this isn't the way the law was written in the first place. But I think this is what Mayor Lowen was saying, is that they've realized now that they didn't do it as well as they could have, and this is a correction. I have one question about the January 1st, 2026 dates when it takes effect. Why was that date chosen? Is that mandatory or is that arbitrary?
That is state law unless it is an urgency ordinance approved by two thirds to go into effect immediately.
Okay. Okay. And also, I would encourage that we get other cities to join us to show that there really is broad-based support for this, that we're not just a lone wolf, that there is there are other cities in the same situation, and they we all support this bill. So I think we should be doing outreach.
Councilmember Burt?
Yes. So I support that we do not take action tonight. But I don't think it has to get routed through Policy and Services Committee to come back to the council. So I would propose that we did we we got a motion, I would propose an amendment to the motion that it return to the council on April 7th for consideration of support or sponsoring of the bill. A second. Well, if the maker and second are accepted, we don't.
I don't because I wasn't okay, suggesting it went through PNS. I was suggesting that having had that hearing first on the legislative background would be helpful.
Okay.
Can I go back and get that clarification again? If if the Townsend gave that to all of us a week early, then would that move things along? If we could get through presentation on the 7th, maybe at that.
Mayor, I would just say I don't see that 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 broader context of other housing legislation that this hinges on that.
Well, that's one opinion, but we're trying to get all the opinions.
This stands on its own merits, and I don't think that the one is linked to the other.
That that's an opinion, and then we need to get off.
That, thank you.
Yeah. Did you have any other comment as the maker in terms of shifting the date?
If there's discussion on the motion, because it was seconded. The the other reason, and this is, I think, also I didn't make clear, is I was hoping we would have us, I was wanting to give us as much time as possible to go talk to other cities, find out if there's preliminary interest. You know, it's it takes time to get to the right decision makers. And whether or not they voted on it, whether or not we voted on it, if we knew there were indicia of interest, if we knew if Cal Cities was interested, we there's a lot we could do between now and then to take the temperature of other cities. And I was just trying to give us as much runway as possible because that would matter to me. And I think that this has a better chance of 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 passing if we feel like other cities are with us on it. So that was the other rationale behind giving us the most amount of time we could and still having time to get in on the letters.
Okay, so procedurally, where we are is that the amendment was not accepted. So you'd have to do an unfriendly amendment and get a second and vote on that.
I think the clerk captured Councilmember Stone's seconding.
Okay. So Councilmember Stone, why don't you speak to the issue?
Well, I'll hold off on speaking to the merits of the of the bill until whichever meeting that we that we address this. I understand, I think, the argument that both Councilmember Byrd and the Vice Mayor are making. For me, I think April 7th gives us two weeks to be able to do that outreach that the Vice Mayor is talking to. Then if we pass it, I think that allows us to be able to continue to go back to cities with an additional two weeks at that point, to be able to see if we can get if we can get additional support and additional support for the for that for that bill. So I I like the 7th. I also am just uncomfortable pushing this to the April 14th, when then the letters have to go out the very next day. I think that's just pushing it too closely. And I do think this is an issue that we should be leading on as a as a city. This is an issue that we're already seeing. The impacts that are gonna that are gonna come from these fouls, as Councilmember Luthcott-Hames has has put it, flagrant fouls. Thank you. You're a bigger basketball fan than I am. And 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 I think it's, I think if the Senator has asked us to be a co-sponsor on, I think it's something that we want to take really seriously. And so I do think just pushing, doing the April 14th is is too last minute for me.
Other comments on just this amendment? Councilmember Luthcott-Hames is.
Yeah.
Thank you. I just have a technical question for staff, perhaps. This question of whether the 7th or the 14th is more efficacious, assuming we want to move forward with being the sponsor of this bill, do we have a better chance of lining up cosponsors with an approved, with a decision in hand that we will be a sponsor, which might dictate that we do it on the 7th? Or can we go and seek the potential for cosponsors as we are going through the PNS process, listening to Townsend? I wouldn't want to, assuming we do go forward with it, which is a big, an open question right now, which date is more likely to allow us to acquire the cosponsors we would want to have ultimately going with us in on this thing?
You phrase that as a staff or a question to staff. I actually think it may be a question for you as much as it would be for us. The, you know, in terms of what would be most persuasive to other, more persuasive to other cities in terms of gaining their support? Would it be to be on sort of the founder's level or to have someone already leading and then be able to join in?
Well, it seems as we would be reaching out, we wouldn't be doing it if we didn't think we were going to get it passed in some format. So I don't know that that would be a barrier to to not getting on, get the get the partners signed up. Other comments, Councilmember Lou, did you have a comment on the amendment?
I just want to confirm, when is the deadline again for the Senate to make amendments? At least before it arrives to the Senate committees?
Ms. Shelby?
Would also like to ask our public commenter, Mr. Brock, if if that, if there's a conclusive answer there to or.
No, I think we have, we let's talk.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Our own firm.
Or, yeah, sorry, let's start.
Ms. Shelby?
Yeah, good question. So I think you mean a committee amendments that would be made to the language that currently exists. There technically is no deadline in the sense that those amendments can be taken up at the dais during the committee hearing. Typically, they are pre-negotiated, but there is no deadline for those amendments, the language exists, and actually just crossed the desk minutes ago. So these, the current language is live now.
Oh, yes, to that point, to to, well, one point, just to clarify. What Ms. Shelby is pointing out, as we just saw, the bill has now been posted to the legislative legislature's website. So the language we've distributed this afternoon is now reflected online for SB 457. One one quick follow-up clarification, Ms. Shelby. The in advance of the committee hearing, there will be an legislative analyst analysis issued. When will that be released? And what would our deadline be in order to be listed as a supporter or potential sponsor?
Yeah, so our letters, either confirming our sponsorship or our support and or our support would be due one week prior to the committee hearing in order to be accurately reflected within the analysis. So our first officially scheduled committee hearing is April 29th. There is a possibility that we may be double referred to April 27th to the Senate Local Government Committee, in which case we would want to have all of our ducks in a row by April 15th, ideally.
I think you misspoke. You said the 27th, I think you meant the 22nd for.
22nd, yes, that's. Yes, 22nd, yes.
Okay, and so there's no other amendment timeline before it. I understand that when it's actually on at committee in discussion, anything could happen with the regrets amendments. But until then, there won't be any cutoff date for other amendments.
I believe that's accurate. There's there's not a deadline for amendments to bills. The in effect, it is a somewhat fluid process until actual passage.
Okay, thank you. I'm generally comfortable with an April 14th timeline. I think there's a lot of nuance to consider for this bill. And I think Policy and Services discussion would actually be helpful because there are other bills that say HCD has to provide comments with a certain amount of time or HCD's comments have to be so specific that you, it can literally be a checklist if you want to literally follow those comments to get us compliant housing element, or HCD has to give you feedback an extra month or something before they currently do. And I think those kind of bills can really complement this or in some ways, like really substitute this. And I think it's difficult for me to really think about what the kind of ideal configuration, for me at least, of state housing policy would be without at least seeing some more on April 8th and being able to report that back to the council.
Michelle, but do you have any information that there's a bill that's that also worked with this? That we would be debating or that would be a side by side?
Yeah, to my knowledge, in conversations with various legislators and stakeholders that would be in this space, no, there is not a bill that would be amending the same code sections related to the self-certification and builder's remedy processes that we're seeking. We understand that Cal Cities will be pursuing a measure related to the timelines by which cities and HCD have that cadence throughout the regional housing needs determination and allocation process, that that is not directly linked to what this bill is seeking to accomplish.
Okay, thanks. Comments still only on the amendment. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. It's about the whether, well, I want to ask the the city attorney whether I can ask the movers and seconders to make this amendment. Is it possible to have more public comment on this one since we had it tonight if we continue it? Because if so, I'd like to ask them if we could amend and make sure that that's part of our next time we hear this.
That doesn't need to be in a motion. We could just.
I mean, because if you continue it, is it the same agenda item? Can we take more public comment?
Oh, you can always take more public comment.
All right, okay. Then I would, and if you say we don't have to say it, and people just kind of nod and say, I I would like to, I feel like we should because of the short notice here. Pardon me?
We're going to.
We're going to, the mayor says we're going to, so we don't have to add it in. Okay. And then I had one little comment that I may forget now. Oh, just on the 7th versus 14th, I mean, there's pros and cons to both. I tend to lean toward the 14th. It's it's just for the various reasons, but I understand the arguments, pro and con. I don't think it's cut and dry. I think we, it's a lot of kind of some elements we don't know, because we don't know what's going to happen in Sacramento. So I understand the arguments there. I'll probably stick with the 14th, but I understand.
Councilmember Burt?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that Senator Becker has really taken a leadership role in trying to correct what many people think is a problem and that lends itself to abuse. And and I think us lending our support for his leadership on that is is really important. And and if he's asked us to do this as soon as possible, then I think the fact that we now can move it off in two weeks gives that good amount of time to have a good public process, everybody understanding it. And I think that's the right way to go.
Yeah, so I'll speak to the amendment as well. I think that it gives us more contingent time if we do this by the 7th. In case something happens on the 7th and we want to make a change again, that's a possibility. Or it just gives us more time between when that's done and somebody has to show up in Sacramento to testify on this. So there's press, you know, there's lead times there, and we're all doing a lot of other things besides this bill. So it just buys us another another week, I think, by by doing the 7th. And if the chair of PNS thinks that having a presentation from Townsend, you know, in this context is appropriate, then I think we ought to look at making that happen. So but I think I'd more, I agree with you, there's maybe pluses and minuses, but I'm really more the 7th.
May I ask the mayor a quick question? Are you saying that you might agenda is a very short study session or something for more reporting on the 14th if we need?
You mean with PNS? I mean, if if you think it should be a special meeting with PNS to get that report, that could work. If you think that they should make a presentation on the 7th to us on other deals, you know, I think there's other ways to get the input.
Thank you for those suggestions.
Other things that are pending. Okay, so that's where we are on the sort of unfriendly amendment. I don't see any other lights. Need to get a different term from that. I know, I know, it's just, it's just how we've started to talk about it on commissions. And here we just always do that. So, okay, so then let's vote on the amendment. First, let's state it. It's a, here we go.
Right, taking the vote on the amendment. Councilmember Luthcott-Hames?
Yes.
Councilmember Rektall?
Yes.
Mayor Lowing?
Yes.
Councilmember Burt?
Yes.
Councilmember Vinker?
No.
Councilmember Lou?
No.
Councilmember Stone?
Yes.
Motion carries five to two, or amendment carries five to two.
Okay. It's basically a substitute motion. Because there's nothing else to be added. Right? Well, now we have to pick a date for the continuance. Not really, not right now. Yeah, no, we're done. It's done.
Mayor Lowing, you need to actually take a second vote on.
Okay.
You amended the date, and now you need to adopt the motion.
Yeah, we were saying it's kind of a substitute motion, but that's fine.
It's technically not, for those of us who care about parliamentary procedures.
Who studied this at night?
Going in a wholly completely different direction, and this was a change to one aspect.
Okay.
Thanks. Sorry, voting on the motion as amended. Vice Mayor Vinker.
Yes.
Mayor Lalling.
Yes.
Councilmember Stone.
Yes.
Councilmember Rektal.
Yes.
Councilmember Lou.
Yes.
Councilmember Burt.
Yes.
Councilmember Lithgow Hames.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. All right, now we have to make a decision at ten fifteen if we want to pick up the item that was pulled from consent. And I'm not, you, you mentioned it was time sensitive, but I'm not sure how time sensitive.
Well, as we head into the budget season, we actually laid out a, a specific, uh, calendar. And it had us notifying the nonprofits of their obligation to, when their deadlines for filing. Next week on the first, as it happens. Uh, so. I was going to suggest if you really didn't hear it tonight, you could go to the seventh, but now it looks like the seventh is going to be a busy meeting. So.
Well, we could go to the thirty first. I know you pulled on that for a different agenda item, but we could move this to a one-item agenda next, next, next Monday.
This is true.
Yeah, uh, Councilmember.
I, I just note that we, we also had the, um, I think we've been trying to reschedule the turf playing field item. If, so if we did go the.
That's further out. That's further out.
Well, why, why would it be so far out?
Well, staff is, uh, working to update the reports based on comments received, uh, and actually that is currently scheduled for the seventh. But I'm not sure that's possible as well. But I, I could tell you at this point, we couldn't accelerate that. I think we'd also have some issues with, again, notice, uh, given the level of community interest we have on that topic.
And I didn't, I don't think the rest of us were aware there's an update. It was just, we pulled an item and then we saw the updated staff.
Well, there, there was a resource problem too, so we had to rearrange the resource, so. Other comments? On when, when we want to hear that? That's what we're talking about right now.
The nonprofit partnership.
Yeah, I mean, sorry, the nonprofit partnership that was pulled from consent tonight.
I would hope we could do it relatively quickly. Um, and I mean, I don't know what the concerns are specifically, but it's not a massive item. So I don't know those people that think it's fast or slow, but if so, it'd be nice to do this because I know there was a lot of. We had a lot of nonprofits, uh, come in person to our, um, PNS meetings. We had two of them on this. And, uh, so I know they were eager because we pulled, well, as it says in the staff report, we pulled them about a couple, you know, two different timelines and they wanted the fast one. So it is time sensitive.
Yeah, I'm just trying to give everybody a chance to weigh in just because we're getting, we're getting late. So, uh, we can certainly try it and if it gets complicated, we can push it. That's another midway option. This side of the dais. Councilmember Lithgow Hames.
My thought is, uh, we didn't typically, we express our concerns when we pull an item or when we vote no on an item. And if those of us who pulled it were given an opportunity to share why we pulled it, we might be able to gauge the size of the requested changes. The scope of the requested changes.
But that's a creative idea. That's fine. As I said, we, we can, we can always start it and if it gets too complicated and takes more than, you know, thirty minutes. We can, uh, see where we are. Why don't you start then, Councilmember Lithgow Hames?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. My concerns were twofold. Um, number one, um, I'm worried. That the monitoring and reporting section, uh, puts too onerous of a burden on smaller nonprofits. Right now, it is measured in terms of the size of the grant requested. And at some point, uh, I think from twenty-five thousand dollar grant and upward, they have to get some kind of independent audit as opposed to relying on the nine ninety. And what I've heard from some of our nonprofit constituents is that smaller nonprofits, even if they are requesting a twenty-five or fifty thousand dollar grant. They may still be a small nonprofit and say, you know, their operating budget is under a million, a million and a half. I'm not exactly sure where the threshold is, but if, if you're a small nonprofit in that realm, getting an outside audit is a huge expense for you. So I would like to see us, uh, use the nine ninety, uh, for far more of the nonprofits. And I would like to, I'd, well, I'd like to see it tied to the size of the nonprofit rather than the size of the grant. That's number one. Number two, the concern about Palo Alto residents only, it does seem to imply in certain portions of the staff report. That it's, um, entities that serve Palo Alto residents, and I've received calls from folks who are concerned. Because they serve residents and employees of Palo Alto, often city employees and certainly employees of. Uh, employed by, uh, non-city, uh, employers. And so I just want to be, uh, to offer that if our language could be a little bit more inclusive, um, not just the Palo Alto residents. But perhaps Palo Alto residents and employees or, um, you know, serving Palo Alto residents and the greater community. I understand for the metrics section, we might want to literally know how many Palo Alto residents are served. But I think in the preamble section, we want language that's more inclusive. That's it for me.
Councilmember Rektal.
Uh, ditto. Well done.
Uh, Councilmember Burt.
Yeah, uh, thank you. Um, so I, I share Councilmember Lithgow Hames. Um, uh, questions and concerns. Uh, I also have a few others. One is, uh, just the, the, the dollars, uh, didn't seem to add up correctly. Uh, we had had in the, uh, this group of nonprofit fundings that were listed in the report. Um, added up to for last fiscal year, two hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. Uh, the proposal is two hundred and thirty-five thousand, but of which fifty thousand, if I understand it correctly. Would be for a new, uh, funding of these, uh, community, uh, uh, grants. Uh, uh, up to five thousand per event. So then, instead of, uh, having the same funding for those, uh, what is it? Four or five nonprofits that we did last year, uh, it would be sixty thousand dollars or so less. And, um, so I didn't understand that and it didn't, it, it didn't seem. The implication of the report was it's the same funding, but the dollars don't add up to it as best I understand it. Um, I also had concerns that the community events, uh, funding up to five thousand was listed as first come, first served. I don't know that that's the best approach. Um, and, um. And I, you know, one of the purposes was to enhance the city's partnerships with nonprofits. Uh, and we had as a council last fall said, we didn't want this process to actually become. Uh, inhibit those partnerships, and I'm concerned that it does, and particularly around the reporting requirement. Uh, the standard, um, uh, financial reporting is the IRS, uh, Form nine ninety. Um, and so I don't know where this notion for a, a reviewed financial statement. Uh, comes from and what our staff is seeking that all the other funding agencies don't seek. Um, so, um, those are additional concerns. Um, and then I really, I think it's worth us to talk about whether we have, in addition to HISREP and CBDG funding. We have nonprofits that we, we fund every year and they're built into the budget. And I think we have a question of whether, um, uh, we should, there are certain nonprofit long-term partners. Uh, or programs that we want to do on a sustained basis. The way this is set up. Uh, it says that those ones that we had identified as a council last year, that we really want to have support. And they, or to support, and they were outside of the CBDG funding. Um, now it says, uh, we would open that lesser amount of dollars to own nonprofits. And kind of have a, a new, um, open-ended, uh, process. As to who would get what from a frankly, what looks like a smaller pie. So that's a lot of concerns. Um, on the other hand, the total dollar amount we're talking about here in the context of the budget isn't enormous. One of the reasons that we, as a council last year, committed additional dollars to HISREP and to these organizations. Was because we, we thought this was a really important commitment of the city to the community. And, um, so I, I, I want to make sure that we're, we're not moving in the, actually the, the opposite direction. From what we said we intended to do, both last year in the budget and in the study session in the fall.
So maybe we should have, uh. Policy and Services, uh, committee members. Comment on some or all of those.
Uh, if, if I'm a mayor and with the indulgence of the PNS chair and committee members. I think I might be able to dispense with at least one or two of those.
Okay.
Okay, so in terms of the monitoring and reporting, the financial monitoring and reporting, staff also heard the same concern, actually late last week. And as such, uh, we would like to agree and change the requirement from any independent financial reporting. To simply the IRS Form nine ninety as the basis for financial reporting. I think we're in agreement with that. Would note that that was based upon the order of magnitude funding we're discussing. So ultimately, if the council decides to increase the funding, there may be additional fi- uh, financial reporting that may be appropriate. Uh, same on the residents. Actually, tonight was the first time we had heard the concern about, or the impression. That we had intended to focus, uh, the, uh, funding on exclusively Palo Alto residents. Or exclusively residents. Uh, as such, uh, be happy to change the wording to make sure it is clear. That, uh, that's not a qualifier, uh, or a means of being exclusive. There are, uh, there, uh, on the form, uh, requests to identify, uh, the metric. But that's for data collection. It's not to exclude any, um, uh, organization that's providing more broad. Uh, services. So I just wanted to add that. I could, I could talk to the, um, the math. Uh, there is really the distinction in what was done last year, uh, with the budget between one-time allocations to specific nonprofits. And ongoing funding, uh, that was to be used, uh, for, uh, this ongoing, uh, purpose. Um, but, uh, again, I could describe that in more detail at the appropriate time.
Okay, Vice Mayor Vener.
Yeah, that was pretty much where I was going to start, but let me put a little finer point on it. Um, so, yeah, the, um. The reporting, we actually talked about that at our meeting and we actually moved up the thing already some, but if we want to move it more, if you've heard complaints, we can. Uh, we, because we, the nine ninety was in the five thousand, we moved it up to the twenty-five thousand. If you want to move it to the hundred thousand, I'm okay, but I also want to note that it's not necessarily a CPA-prepared document. It could be a CPA-reviewed document that, that you would still need a CPA. So moving it somewhere, I'm fine with. We didn't hear any complaints at the time of the two meetings about that, so I didn't realize it was a concern, even though we had a lot of nonprofits there. But if it is and our staff is cool with it, that is fine. I also want to point out that it was also depending on risk. Whatever staff viewed that as consisting of, and, you know, this is a pilot. Let's also remember, this is a, we're going to learn. We wanted to take a lot of what staff had constructed and put together and tweak it where we needed to. But, um, you know, that was, that was actually an issue that I was concerned about and we actually raised and talked about during the committee. So if we want to go a little higher and have it be nine ninety only, I'm fine with that if our staff is fine with that, and I think I'm hearing we are. Um, so I will see what my colleagues think. Um, with respect to Palo Alto residents, I'm fascinated that that was the impression. Because we actually had, it was lovely. We had, uh, Honorable Larry Moody come and talk to us and ask that exact question. And we said, no, no, it's definitely open to people who serve, uh, people beyond Palo Alto residents. But we are concerned because it is our city, or not concerned, we do want to know to what degree you are serving Palo Altons. And or people who come in, uh, for work or play. So that was the intent. And if there are changes that need to be made to reflect that, that would reflect what I think was the sense of the committee, um, getting nods from the committee members. So it just must not have gotten translated fully. Um, so. I, I think those, those are the, the things that, um, the, the, the numbers. You know, again, we, we, it was, um. I'll, I'll leave that to staff and Councilmember Burt to work out relative to prior. This is what was presented to us. Um, but I, I, I think the, um, the relationship sense, if that to me is an issue. Where if the intent of this body is to really just cement. The relationships with those we have funded before, this is a somewhat different proposal. And I, I thought it was brought to us to say how, you know, we have this, this chunk of money, which isn't really all that large. Um, what are the fair ways, uh, in, in a process that's open to all? What should that look like? And so that's why, what we talked about and we heard from, um, the community about. But if, if there's a different intent there, we should talk about that and we may need to revise it. So those are my comments. Uh, Councilmember Stone or Lou have thoughts?
Yeah, not, not too much to, to add. I mean, I, I am frustrated. I, I do think we were very clear to, to staff. In that, in, within the Policy and Services meeting, that we were not going to be excluding nonprofits just because they. Um, because they served residents outside of Palo Alto, and I think all three of us made that very clear and there's quite a robust discussion around that. So don't know why it hasn't been translated very well. So that's easy. I, I, I'm fine with the other, with the other recommendation. Uh, to regarding the, regarding the audit. I do just want to, I think, there were a lot of things that I was a bit un- uncomfortable with. But ultimately, we, we heard from a lot of nonprofits that weighed in. I, I actually thought initially that the later deadline would have been better. But then heard from nonprofits that they wanted the earlier deadline, so that changed my mind. I was fine with what, what they prefer. I think ultimately, even though I agree, there were some things I was not quite comfortable with. I like the idea that this is a pilot program. We're trying something new and the, I think the spirit of kind of the staff. Recommendation and approach here is, let's give this a try for a year. We're going to find out what works. We're going to find out what doesn't work. And we're going to be able to, to pivot and adjust, uh, while necessary. So I think it would be challenging to make any significant changes beyond, I think, what was already discussed tonight, especially PNS. We did have two really good meetings and had those discussions with the, with the nonprofits. Um, I mean, pulling it was the right decision tonight to be able to address a couple of these, um, minor things. But other than that, I think we definitely, I think, um, at this point, it's, I'm comfortable with it, with it moving forward.
No, I was just going to say, as the only one that didn't either pull it or create it. I wanted to make a couple of comments. I did, I did note that thing about, um, the, both, both of the items that were brought up by you two saying plus one over here. Um, I was a little surprised that we actually put dollars in there at all, because it seemed like that's something that we have to decide in the context of, you know, sort of. I don't hate to say these words, but zero-based budgeting with the, with the year that we're trying to do. So whatever numbers are there, to me, that's, whether they're too high or too low, it's more of a process issue than the total number of dollars right there. So I would just like to register that and see some nods from PNS people that, um, we got to figure out what the number is. And based on what you've commented on here, yeah, I don't, I don't think we want to communicate that every grant is going to be a permanent grant. Uh, if we want to start breaking it down, we might decide to do three-year grants or five-year grants or something like that, but it's not. We, we do need to spread the, spread the bits that we have where appropriate to meet what they, what you say in here are unmet needs. And I think the focus in terms of delivering this is figuring out what the unmet needs are. You know, not five people that deal with, five organizations that deal with pretty much the same thing, because then we're not lined up with our, our charter. Um, but I, I also want to just say that I, I could see a lot of work went into this. I thought it was quite organized. I get it that you're doing phased, which I think is. I hadn't thought about that before and I wasn't in those meetings, but I think that's, that's. But I think that's, that's, I think that's, I think that's the way to go. And, you know, messaging this to everybody, including us here in, in the nonprofits is that we're going to work together to figure out what works. So this is a pilot and then we'll just, just do an email on it. Also structurally, I thought it was, I thought it was quite good. So from all the discussions, what do we still have left that might need to be revisited, if any? Seemed like Councilmember Burt had the most suggested changes to make. We just addressed a number of those.
Well, we, we addressed a number, but one, they'd, they'd have to be incorporated into a motion with substantial changes, I think, from we, interesting because recommendation isn't very precise, but the staff report goes into much more detail on the recommendation. So what are we voting on? We voting on the latitude that's in the recommendation? Or the specifics that are in the staff report? So that's one question.
Go ahead.
Sure. I, I'm happy to respond to that. You, you would be giving us direction with the understanding of what staff is proposing in terms of the implementation steps. I think if you have concerns with what we are proposing, this is a time to voice them. At the same time, you know, I think you can trust that we will follow the, the direction that the council is providing in general terms.
Okay. And I, two other things. I'm not recalling, we, I just realized one of the nonprofits that we funded last year was additional funding to Neighbors Abroad. Is that elsewhere in the budget now as an ongoing? I, I realize it's not listed here. We had done out of the last.
It is an ongoing.
It's ongoing?
Yes.
Okay. So that's a, a good example of where we've said, well, which of these areas that we as a council in recent years have said, gee, this is an important partner in the community. We want to support it. It's not really within the HISREP guidelines, but it's important, whether it's Third Thursday or Neighbors Abroad or, or the UNAF or others. And I, I think that needs to be part of the conversation and we haven't had that. So I'd like to recommend that we, we can go forward with a process for additional discretionary funding that would be open to all nonprofits, but we also have a council discussion of which we want to choose to build into the budget on an ongoing basis. And we, I'll just note that over time, we've, we have other nonprofits that we support in the budget that are not part of HISREP or CBDG. And these were kind of in that in-between category where we were going, gee, is this something we need to look at funding on an ongoing basis? What came out of PNS was something different than how do we fund these five or so functions on an ongoing basis? It was kind of opening it up to everything that doesn't fall under CBDG. That may have merit in a certain way, but it's different from what we, I thought we had, what I think was discussed at the study, study session in the fall. I went back and watched it. I will also add from a process standpoint, I think it was the council consensus and understanding that it wasn't going to come back on consent. We were asking Policy and Services to flush out some of these things and it was going to come back to the council for discussion. So that, we're, we're doing that now, but I just wanted to note that, that I don't think that's what was, you know, in a study session, we don't get to vote on things, but I went back and watched it and I don't think that was the sense of direction.
Vice Mayor Viner, would you like to make a motion? Either changes already built in and/or just your basic motion and see if we have other amendments?
I'm just listening to the noise. I, I, I think that, yeah, the, the way this was teed up now really wasn't just, as I was saying a few minutes ago, to, to cement those relationships. I do think, I, I like the idea of having a, a council conversation. I think you're suggesting like in the future about with whom and how we would cement the relationships more fully and that this is more of a kind of wide-open process. That's kind of how it was teed up and I, you have a better memory than mine on this. But I also think that if, if things are, I mean, it, it went on consent just simply because it was unanimous, right? And so we, we looked and said, well, why not? And I mean, the, but, so if it's supposed to come back for a discussion, maybe that's something staff could help us remember or maybe at the time of the referral to note down.
Well, I'm more interested in where we're going tonight.
Okay, sorry. All right. Well, I think that we can, i- i- if this, if, if the motion to, for the council approve a phased approach to, to enhancing non-partnership, profit partnerships with, along the parameters as outlined in the staff report with the amendment that only a 990 is required for, let me get the right words.
Financial reporting.
Thank you, for financial reporting. And I don't even know how to say the Palo Alto residents thing because I thought it was baked in there.
To clarify that it's not restricted to Palo Alto residents?
Yes, to, to, to nonprofits serving Palo Alto residents only. Yeah, I, I, I think that, that does it.
And it sounded like Councilmember Burt wanted to add one or two more.
Yeah, and, and do you, we could, well, go ahead and say.
That needs a second. I'll do it and then offer amendments.
Great.
Okay. So staff has already agreed that the, the financial reporting would be the IRS Form I90 up to the 100,000.
I think we're due for the whole thing. That's what I just.
For the, oh, oh, you got that in motion. Okay.
Sorry, the motion.
Sorry. And then I would propose that the, and we, this where we have, the recommendation was for this to go through PNS on the allocations, but we have to go through Finance Committee to look at the amounts. So we have a bit of a dilemma. We haven't, we have a tight budget. But a- as I noted, my math says that we've actually cut back on these that were funded last year. And so I would have that we move forward with funding comparable for the FY '25, excluding whatever amount we add for the community events, which is penciled in at the 50,000.
Why do you want any numbers in there at all right now?
Well, that's.
I mean, to me, as I said earlier, this is just an EG. This is just an example.
That's because I thought we needed numbers in there for PNS to go forward with a process on recommending how to allocate them. But if we want to leave the numbers off, for now, I'm fine with that, too.
I have a question for staff. In the staff report, it says a city events and programming line item was established with ongoing funding. So that makes it sound like it had been done. Am I looking at the wrong thing?
I'm sorry. That made it sound like what? That it had not been done?
Where?
That it had. So I'm looking at funding availability on.
Yes.
My packet page seven.
So the $235,000 has been established as an ongoing line item. And so that's the funding we're recommending to use for this purpose. Again, as the mayor pointed out, once the council gets into the budget, you could decide to add money, to take money away.
Right.
But this is the starting point.
And my point is that that's a good number, provided that you're not subtracting the 50,000 for this new category from it, that that would need to be additive.
Yeah, all I'm saying is that you might not have that 50,000. You might decide in the Finance Committee to recommend to the council that we're not doing it, so.
So I'm, I'm good. I'm just trying to understand the process that we would be able to follow in the next couple of months if we don't put a dollar amount in now.
That's a staff question.
Sure. You know, again, you'll be presented with your study session on the budget with initial recommendations from staff on May 5th. From that point, the Finance Committee will go into its deliberations. And in concept, the, as prescribed or described here, PNS would look at the actual applications. I think the simple way to look at it is that PNS will rank the applications and we can draw the line at where the money runs out. And so that's, I think, how it can proceed while Finance is responsible for deciding where the line is.
Okay, so leave the dollar amount out for now. You're good with that.
Well, again, we, we use this as a placeholder, so we understand the order of magnitude while understanding that there will be flexibility as you get.
Okay, well then, as a placeholder, I would say the funding would be comparable to last year, plus whatever amount we would add to this community events category. And that's what I'd put in the motion. It's not an explicit dollar amount. It's guidance.
And I remember having this discussion at PNS. I just can't remember the specifics, but the last year dollar amount was, we went through this exactly and I just.
Last year was 246.
Yeah.
Okay.
And instead, we have 235 minus 50.
Yeah, I, I understand.
Okay. All right. I think that covers my main concerns at this time.
I'm fine with that. You may want to put only at the beginning of A, only Form 990 because right now it gives a bunch of options that are higher.
That's good. Any other comments, questions? Good work, team. We're getting there. You ready to go? All right.
Councilmember Lou?
Yes.
Councilmember Burt? Mayor Lowing?
Yes.
Councilmember Stone?
Yes.
Councilmember Lithgow Hames?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Vinker?
Yes.
Councilmember Rektal?
Oh, yeah.
Motion carries unanimously.
Wow, I want you on the committee. Can we have a committee in four?
All right, I think that finishes all of our leftovers. All right. All right. And this also means that we're not doing another meeting on the 31st. The next meeting is the 7th, right? So we don't have to do six meetings in a row, right? Excellent. Good progress all around. At least you ended June.